Could I have a board? Could I? Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Could I have a board members back to your table, please? This April 10, 2014, regular meeting number 17 of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the pleasure reasons, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Stewart High School Select Vocal Ensemble under the direction of Amy Iding.
My pleasure reasons for the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Such wonderfully done by Stewart High School's Select Vocal Ensemble under the direction of Amy Iding. Next, we'll go to certification of closed meeting compliance. In order to comply with the Section 2.23712D of the Court of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that, since the Fairfax County School Board convened the closed meeting on April 10, 2014, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. The foregoing shall also be deemed to include the certification of each School Board member who served on a student disciplinary committee that those closed committee meetings are lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Section 2.23711A2 of the Court of Virginia, and that only student disciplinary matters were heard, discussed, or considered in those closed committee meetings. Is there a motion? Move by Mr. Welkup and then seconded by Ms. Hines. All those in favor, raise your hand. So vote is unanimous. Thank you. The motion passes. Okay, there was an abstention from Mrs. Church. The motion passes. We have a few announcements before we continue with the meeting this evening. If you would like to access tonight's agenda and relating meeting documents, you can do so by going to the FCPS website, select School Board, and then upcoming meetings and agendas. The meeting is also being streamed live on the FCPS's website homepage. Click on "Watch School Board Live." If you have signed up to speak before the Board during citizen participation, please turn in 16 copies of remarks at this time to the deputy clerk sitting in the section to my right over there. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is also on the table by the auditorium entrance. Please turn off your cell phone and let me recognize some Boy Scouts in the audience. We have Kevin Wu from Troop Number 1523 and in there. Where are you, Kevin? Thank you. Thanks for being with us this evening. And we have other Boy Scouts from Troop Number 1853 Springfield. All right, okay. You want to shake my hand? Come on down. Okay, last but not least, Troop Number 1533 from Mantua. Any other Boy Scout? And if you stay till the end of this, tonight's meeting, we'll have a picture taken together, but it's going to be about 12 o'clock. You don't have to stay till midnight. You can go home. The next, we have a recognition of 2013 Outstanding Principal Award, and let me call on... Mrs. Reed.
Thank you Chairman Moon. At this time, I invite Dr. Asti to come to the lectern. She's so humble. She didn't want me to do this, but I insisted. Tonight, on behalf of the School Board, it is my pleasure to recognize Mari Asti, Principal of Mosby Woods Elementary School, for being selected to receive the 2013 Outstanding Principal Award from the University of Virginia's Curry School of Education Foundation. This annual award is presented to a graduate of the Curry School who has demonstrated excellence in school administration, professional stature beyond the school, and dedicated community service. Dr. Asti began her career with FCPS in 1990 as a teacher at Mosby Woods Elementary School and quickly moved up the administrative ladder to be the Assistant Principal and then Principal at Lynbrook Elementary School. In 2004, she returned as Principal at Mosby Woods, and under her leadership, the school was named a National Title I Distinguished School in 2006 and 2007, and received the Virginia Board of Education Excellence Award in 2010 and the Virginia Governors Award for Educational Excellence in 2011. Mosby Woods was one of only 16 schools in the Washington Metropolitan Area selected to participate in the Kennedy Center's Changing Education Through the Arts Program, a partnership that trains teachers to develop expertise in integrating the arts with teaching of other school subjects to help students learn with greater motivation and ease. Mosby Woods, for those of you that don't know it, is a wonderfully diverse multicultural school. Staff and students hail from 43 countries and speak 27 languages. Dr. Asti is often complimented for her exemplary principal mentoring and her personal commitment to developing the next generation of outstanding teachers. She partnered with George Mason University to create a professional development school at Mosby Woods to provide the university's students an opportunity to learn how to be effective educators with the guidance and support of experienced faculty and administrators. Dr. Asti recognizes that her students cannot be successful learners if their basic human needs are not met. She maintains a food pantry in the school for students in need. She organized a walk for the homeless, and she established the Shining Stars program during the winter holidays to provide clothing and gifts to students and families in need. Dr. Asti is joined tonight by her mother and her mentor, staff, and other supporters. The School Board is very proud to have Dr. Asti here in FCPS, and we congratulate her on this much deserved recognition. And at this time, I'd like to invite the Board members, Dr. Asti, and any of your fans in the audience to come up front for a photo opportunity, and I know that includes Dr. Zuluaga as well.
Next item of the list is citizen participation. Fairfax County citizens who would like to address the School Board should arrange to be placed on the speakers list by signing up online at www.fcp.edu or by calling the School Board office at 571-423-1075. If the concern is a group concern, please consider appointing a spokesperson, and while the spokesperson is speaking, those in support may stand to show their support. The School Board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries, or personal attacks on any person. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should not be raised at public meetings. Any such concern should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school officials. Citizens, I encourage to write the School Board on any school-related topic. Speakers are requested to limit your remarks to not more than 3 minutes and provide at least 16 copies of their presentation for distribution to the Board. Tonight, nine citizens have signed up to address the Board. Rupal Pahara, George Basara Kimberly Adams, Stephen Greenberg, Karima Chiap, Caroline Dottel, Candida Mejia, Rose Chu, and Aiman Eldarwish. If we could have speakers ready, starting with Rupal Pahara, to be followed by George Basara and Kimberly Adams.
Good evening. I did email my remarks. I did email my remarks. I hope you've received them. My name is Rupal Pahara. I'm the parent of seven-year-old Sophie, a first grader at Bailey's. Bailey's Cat in the Hat, Bailey's Rock Stars, Bailey's Rising Tigers. These are just a few of the names that Bailey's students came up with during the voting process. I remember how Sophie was so excited to be a part of this process as she shared these names with us. As a parent, I appreciated that the principal and administration had implemented and encouraged the student participation. She kept us updated, and there were disappointments here and there as her favorite names did not make the final cut. But we explained to her this is how the voting process works. On the night of the vote to send a name to the School Board, the students campaigning consisted of running ahead to the voting boards and pulling their parents to encourage them to vote for their name. As their names were eliminated, the students continued to participate by helping to count the dots on each board as the options were narrowed. I was impressed with their positive attitude as I was getting anxious myself regarding the name that I had selected and that the tone that was starting to emerge from the adults. Once the votes were counted, the final vote yielded Bailey's Upper Elementary with the most votes. The members of the community that attended that meeting and voted for the process began to voice their complaints regarding this name choice, the process, and the time that they had to respond. When I came home, Sophie got out of bed to ask me if the new school would be called Bailey's Rock Stars. When I told her no, she screwed up her face to cry, and I reminded her gently, "Remember, that's how voting works." I think that if a seven-year-old can understand the process willingly and excitedly, participate, and accept the outcome, then the voting process worked. The ability of a small band of community members to disrupt and delay that process simply because their choice didn't receive the most votes seems to set a poor example for the students. I hope that you all consider the students and the examples to set for them when making this decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is George Basara, to be followed by Kimberly Adams and Stephen Greenberg. Mr. Basara. I don't see him, so we'll go to Kimberly Adams, to be followed by Stephen Greenberg. They must be at budget hearing. Let me go to Stephen Greenberg.
Dr. Garza, Chairman Moon, esteemed School Board members, and the distinguished Mr. Looking Forward to Spring Break. My name is Steve Greenberg, President of Fairfax County Federation of Teachers. Regards to 4.303, the school calendar and snow day makeups, as well as I'll be speaking to student achievement goal 3.02. I'm going to start with FCFT supports the posted recommendation that the School Board designate Wednesday, June 25, 2014, as the last day of school. Now, I do understand that there was a last-minute motion on this today. I haven't had time to sufficiently assess the impact of that on the system, so I'm not even going to comment on that right now. To be clear, Dr. Garza did engage the employee organizations on this and solicited our input. Unfortunately, due to a severe winter inflexible State Board of Education and at least one ineffective local center, we are stuck with few viable options. Removing planning or professional development for elementary teachers on a Monday would not help us assure them that we understand their needs and would result in less effective instruction. Both our students and teachers deserve better. The fact that we contacted the state on several occasions only to be told that if we applied for a waiver, it would be denied, and we would irritate them by even asking, didn't leave us with any good options.
We interrupt our regularly scheduled speech for a special FCFT Lack of Public Service announcement.
Hi. Are you angry about the school calendar decision? Are you frustrated that nobody can figure this out? Are you confused as to why politicians keep getting in the way? Are you disappointed in what's happening? Don't harass the superintendent. Don't yell at the School Board. You can do both at once. You can contact Senator George Barker. That's right, Senator George Barker from Springfield. Two years ago, it was his vote and his vote solely that kept us from having the flexibility in the calendar that we currently need. While you're talking to George, why don't you ask him about King's Dominion laws? How about tourism, lobbying, ethics? How about Ben Franklin? By the way, tell George that FCFT and Steve sent you. Thanks a lot.
We now return to our regularly scheduled speech.
Folks, I'm going to be out of time here, so I'm going to make this really short. I also wanted to make sure that you understand that I think that later high school start times and homework are things we want to think about with that student achievement goal because we want these people to be good citizens, and we want them to be well-rounded people, and that means they need to be doing something other than working all the time, just like your teachers. Have a good night.
Thank you. The next speaker is Karima Chiap, to be followed by Carolina Dottel and Candida Mejia.
Good evening, School Board members. I'm Karima Chiap, mother of two children at Bailey's Elementary School. I want to thank the School Board for solving the overcrowding problem at Bailey's Elementary School by purchasing a new building. It is a very exciting time for our school. Tonight, I'm here to ask the School Board to support the resolution to name the second campus Bailey's Upper Elementary School for the Arts and Sciences. Though I was unable to attend the meeting on March 19 to select the new name, I'm happy with the name the group selected. We are Bailey's Elementary School. The second school needs a name that makes it simple to tell the two locations apart. Bailey's Upper Elementary does that. It makes it clear that the new building is for our older students. It makes it clear that this new location will have all the same wonderful programs and great people as our current school. Bailey's Upper Elementary School for the Arts and Sciences is the name we selected. This is the name we support. Please support the resolution to use this name, and thank you.
Next, we have Carolina Dottel, to be followed by Candida Mejia.
Good evening, Dr. Garza and School Board members. Carolina Dottel was not able to be here tonight. I will read her statement for her. I'm Julia Maceda, and I have my kids too in Bailey's. Carolina Dottel has been an active parent at Bailey's for over seven years. She has two daughters. One is in Bailey's that graduate, and one is in second grade in the Spanish version program. Her statement is, "My daughter, her friends, parents, and neighbors all participate in selecting a name for the new Bailey's building. It concerns me that their vote might not be taken into account. Their voice should be respected. This school is Bailey's. This is not a new school. We like the name Bailey's Upper Elementary School for the Arts and Sciences. A simple name is easier to pronounce for the new English speakers. We understand it. The kids love the name Bailey's. It is the name of their school. Their opinion should count too. Please support the name Bailey's Upper Elementary School for the Arts and Sciences." She's my daughter Allison, and she speaks.
Please don't change Bailey's name. I love Bailey's.
Next, we have Candida Mejia, to be followed by Rose Chu and Aiman Eldarwish.
Buenas noches. Good evening. Estimado Dr. Garza y miembros del Consejo de las Escuelas. Dr. Garza and all members of the School Board.
Yo soy Candida Mejia. Soy madre de una niña de la escuela Bailey's Elementary.
I am Candida Mejia, and I am the mother of a daughter at Bailey's Elementary School.
Estoy aquí para pedirles que el nuevo nombre de la escuela Bailey's sea...
I am here to ask you that the new school, the name of the new school of Bailey's be...
Bailey's Upper Elementary School for the Arts and Sciences.
Bailey's Upper Elementary School for the Arts and Sciences.
Mi hija estaba muy emocionada de ser parte del nombramiento de la escuela.
My daughter was very excited to be a participant in the choosing of the name of the school.
Con eso ella y sus amigas aprendieron a elegir un nombre.
With this experience, my daughter and her friends learned how to elect a name.
Y cómo se vota.
And how one votes.
Los nombres que los estudiantes escogieron fueron muy divertidos.
The names that the students proposed were very interesting.
Mi hija vino conmigo a la reunión del 19 de marzo para escoger un nuevo nombre.
My daughter came with me to the reunion on March 19 to help choose the new name.
Usamos nuestros stickers y escogimos los nombres juntas.
We used our stickers and we chose the name together.
Después de la votación, el nombre elegido fue Bailey's Upper Elementary School for the Arts and Science.
After the election, the name that was chosen was Bailey's Elementary Upper for the Arts and Sciences.
Les pido por favor, use en el nombre que los padres, estudiantes, y vecinos escogieron.
I ask you, please, to use the name that the students, the parents, and their friends and neighbors have chosen.
Por favor, muéstranos que nuestro voto sí cuenta.
Please show us that our vote counts. Thank you.
Next speaker is Rose Chu, to be followed by Aiman Eldarwish.
Hello, my name is Rose Chu. I live in Bailey's Crossroads. I'm here to encourage the naming of schools after prominent Virginians, including those who represent the diversity of Fairfax County. I'm here to recommend the name of Bailey's Upper Level Elementary School of Arts and Sciences, Thurgood Marshall Campus. As a lawyer for the NAACP, Thurgood Marshall won 29 out of 32 cases before the Supreme Court, including the very important Brown versus Board of Education that desegregated schools. Justice Thurgood Marshall and his Filipino wife Cecilia moved to Lake Barcraft in 1968, a year after the Supreme Court struck down bans on multiracial marriages. a year after the Supreme Court struck down bans on multiracial marriages. This would be very fitting. He was a neighbor of this, to name the campus for Thurgood Marshall.
The last speaker on the list I have is Ayman Eldarwish.
My name is Ayman Eldarwish from Bailey's Crossroads. Honored school members, I come to the school board meeting to speak to its honored members, to my community in which I have lived for, as an active member for the last 25 years and more, to speak to my neighbors, to speak to my friends which I cherish. I come with the concern that the new campus of Bailey's Elementary School will be named other than Thurgood Marshall, as proposed in previous, as, as one of the proposed names in previous meetings. The U.S. Supreme Court Justice Thurgood Marshall introduced as a national hero in our history books taught in Fairfax County public schools. Among us, he lived among us in the Barcroft community since 1968, until he passed away in 1993. He left our entire country with a tremendous legacy of abolishing segregation in public schools, and we welcome all diverse minorities among us today just because of Thurgood Marshall. He fought hard for that right so that all citizens feel equally welcome as Americans first. Our kids, from our first day, from their first day at school, feel the same as any other kid in the school system, an American. This legacy will live forever. His honored wife still lives among us in Lake Barcroft today, and we can invite her to a, to our renaming ceremony and claim that this district had been honored by Justice Thurgood Marshall as a resident and as a neighbor. Graduates can speak all their lives that they were students here, right here where he lived. I don't need to remind all those attending and all those who will vote on this proposed new name. Many before me have spoken of his legacy that makes us all proud as citizens today. When new neighbors from diverse communities learn from their kids at school about the life and legacy of Thurgood Marshall, they will build interest in integrating better as new Americans. They will become better Americans. They will know that they are welcome. They will know that they can dream, just as any of us can dream, of a better future for their family and neighborhoods, district, the state of Virginia, and, and our country as a whole. I urge you to vote for Bailey's Elementary School for the Arts and Sciences, Thurgood Marshall Campus.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We have two speakers who weren't here earlier. I believe that might have just arrived. Let me invite Mr. George Basera, if you are ready, and to be followed by Kimberly Adams.
Good evening. That was a supervisor, my fault. Superintendent Garza and school board staff, three things I want to talk about. First, this, sorry if I can repeat some of the stuff that people might have said. Snow days, make it quick and simple. I appreciate the effort that Ms. Hunter's doing to better communications with the Hispanic community in terms of the keep in touch notices. I don't know if any of you have received both languages when they come out, when closing the two hours. In English, it's very extensive, very detailed. Let's say about 10 lines. In Spanish, it's one or two lines currently. But I know she's in the process of doing that, obviously, translation and money and vetting it through, so hopefully there's a plan to be that in the works soon. Next thing, naming of the school. Gut feeling is you already know what you're gonna do, not, not what I would like, but if you can look at that issue real closely, I'm surprised it's gonna go that way just because of a policy that you can't change and you have to do it right away for whatever reason. So hopefully, you can really look at it so each time this issue comes up, it's not just whoever shows up. I'd do like to say, the four rounds, it came, went from 356 votes to 63 on the fourth round. Every morning, like an FCDC meeting there, four rounds, and people didn't left and they weren't instructed to stay, or something occurred with instructions. Strategic plan, that's my main thing I wanted to talk today. Went to one of the three meetings at Lake Braddock, 49 people, eight minorities, 44 at the other one, at the one in Rocky Run, I'd say about six minority members, and then 35 at Edison, roughly about five. I don't know who said April 7th, you know, I'm glad males came that night, especially NCAA championship night. You know, I don't think that's the best time. I understand you want people to fight for school budgets and that's why, maybe other dates, because EKRA told me they were, they wanted to do it during the rest of the week, but I understand where the push is. Strategic plan. So looking at the contracts that I received, that you always got on that and how they chosen, to me, it read that you guys are gonna do a student growth model, and that's great. As you know, MSAOC is charged this year to go do a growth model and that's where the beginning stages. So hopefully you include MSAOC in the process of when you're looking at the rigorous student analysis. The more on the other, the parent side of things, that is data, that is privacy thing. So I'm making sure that Mr. Perez, whoever's the lead coordinator, is leading that with EKRA and making sure that that information isn't given totally and they don't come back to us and sell us their product round, uh, down the line. I need to make sure that's, it's kept private. Also, strategic plan and has, I talked with that with the board of supervisors today. And that's it. Thank you.
Kimberly Adams.
I don't think I need this little stool. Good evening, Chairman Moon, members of the board, and Dr. Garza. Just drove here very quickly from the board of supervisors meetings that I've been attending the last few days. My name is Kimberly Adams and I come before you as the president of the Fairfax Education Association. I'm here to speak on item 4.03, the standard school year calendar and the snow makeup days. The superintendent proposed for your consideration a change to the school calendar to account for the additional snow day in excess of our current calendar. While no one is happy about the fact we will go to school probably until just the very end of June, we understand that this is incredibly beautiful winter that has made it so, and I have a great affinity for snow and was hap- happy that we finally got to dust off our sleds and use them this year. I reviewed the state memo on the procedure for requesting waivers and found this. The request shall include evidence of efforts that have been made by the school division to reschedule as many days as possible and certification by the division superintendent and chairman of the local school board that every reasonable effort making up lost teaching days or teaching hours was exhausted before requesting a waiver of this requirement. Based on the adopted calendar, we must now make a change to include one additional day that was not in the original plan. We were informed as associations by Dr. Garza that she did have a conversation with Pat Wright, the state superintendent for instruction, about the possibility of a waiver. I'm certain that her decision not to file a waiver was in the best interest of the school system. Dr. Garza did inform the associations of her need to amend the calendar and we discussed multiple options at the table, none of which is a good solution for everyone. Dr. Garza, the fact that you did not impinge on our spring break made us very happy. The 25th of June seems the best alternative to making up the required time by lengthening days or adding Saturday instructional hours or other possibilities that would have had significant impact on the community. Many of our members are already concerned about making up lost instructional time, and that, of course, is our primary objective. Staff in schools support the, staff in our schools support using the last day of instruction as being the last day also required for teachers and instructional personnel to report. This allows us to continue with a host of post-contract activities, including second jobs and professional development opportunities. As we move through the end of the year, I hope we can work together to develop calendars that maximize our instructional time and the flexibility to accommodate the one thing that cannot be predicted, Mother Nature.
Thank you. That concludes the citizen participation. And next item of business is a 3.02 student achievement goal two and goal three. Dr. Garza?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm real excited tonight for you to see the presentation that Dr. Dockery and Marty Smith have put together. It will be a joint report. But first of all, I have to say that I'm proud to be a part of an organization that has long valued the overall well-being of students, and I think goals two and three are evidence of that. That real desire and keen interest in making sure that we're developing students who, I think the goals are wonderful, who demonstrate essential life skills and who demonstrate responsibility to the community, and it's more detailed than that, and I know they'll go over it in just a moment. So I think this, this school division, this board, and the leadership in this school system have demonstrated and really been a leader on how do we develop well-rounded citizens and how do we prepare them for our future. So tonight, you'll hear some wonderful things that are going on in schools all throughout the division. You'll hear about very specific schools and projects that are very much aligned in fulfilling this, these board, very important board goals. And then I think moving forward, this work has really provided a springboard for us taking our portrait of a graduate and making sure that all these efforts that are going on in our schools all throughout the division are really taken to scale. So I'm very excited about the work that all our employees and our staff and leadership have done to fulfill these goals, and I think you'll, you'll enjoy this presentation tonight. So I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Dockery. I think you're leading off, I believe.
All right, yes, and I think Mr. Smith might have put the stool up here for me. Okay.
And, you know, we thought this would be a good idea to, to present together, but we're going to be doing this a lot tonight, so.
So we are delighted to be here together to bring you the goal two, essential life skills.
And goal three, responsibility to the community reports.
It's something we've been wanting to do together for a long time because, as you'll see tonight, it's really the actions and the behaviors that have been changing in our system through our stu- our teaching and our, our, the things that our students are doing, and not just the data collection points or the metrics. And so tonight, you're going to have to, have a chance to see civic responsibility, personal goal-setting, environmental stewardship overlaid with the demands of collaboration, communication, critical thinking, and creativity at its finest. So I put at your table, and this is posted on Board Docs, a crosswalk that looks at goals two and three, how they fit together so well, and on the back, oop, did you bring the clicker up? And on the back, it also has the draft of our portrait of the graduate. Because while it's in draft form, if you look at some of the bullets, when you listen to the students and teachers talk tonight, you'll really be finding the places where these words are really going to action, and it will let you know that not only is portrait of the graduate have a lot of work to build on, but it allows us to take this work to the next level. So if we look at goal 2.1, demonstrate honesty, responsibility, and leadership.
And goal 3.2, be respectful and contributing participants in their school, community, country, and world. We're going to start our partnership off this evening by talking about a leadership and bilingual student cohort at Marshall High School. So last spring, faculty members at Marshall High School worked together to create the Marshall High School Bilingual Cohort. They decided to focus especially on their bilingual students in order to help those students realize what a great asset their bilingual skills could be, especially in serving the community. They invited the service learning resource teacher, Laura Wells, to help them develop their idea, and together they envisioned a group of students from different grade levels taking bilingual courses together in government, math, Spanish for native speakers, and leadership. Through these courses and their service learning experience, students would develop 21st century skills and improve their sense of responsibility both for themselves and their community. So now, a year later, the students at Marshall High School Bilingual Cohort are busy planning a free sports clinic for feeder elementary school students, and the, the goals of the sports clinic are to build relationships between students, teach social skills, help students be fit, healthy, and less stressed, and provide students with more opportunities to succeed in high school and college. So tonight, we have two students from that leadership cohort, along with their teacher, Ms. Karen Tibabuzo, to talk about their perspectives with the leadership cohort. And our students are Brandon and Carlos.
Good evening and thank you for having us here. I'm not going to lie to you, at the beginning of the school year, it was a challenge just to convince our students they were leaders, and they were able to do the work they're doing right now, they couldn't process why they were in that class. So now, I'm so happy just to see them just leading our project for our school, and I just have to thank you, our student services director, Cindy Blady, and our school principal, Jay Pearson, for their support. Without their support, we couldn't be here, and especially to, to Mrs., Ms. Wells. She has been supporting us all this time, just being with us every single week, just trying to support our work, and I have my students that better than them to give you their insights about our program. Thank you.
Hello. I learned in leadership that, that leadership doesn't, it isn't, it means that not one person is in charge of everything. We separate different aspects of a project so that everyone has a part. I learned the importance of communicating with different people and creating connections. We learned how to, how the different offices work in the county and how to communicate with them, and the courses also taught us how to cooperate with the group. We don't blame one person. The whole group has to take responsibility for the actions, including failures. I learned responsibilities and time management. We have deadlines that we have to meet personally, all of us. We all have a different part of the project that we all have to complete. For example, I had to contact an elementary school, and it took a while for them to call back, but, you know, I got in on time in the deadline. And we also learned about the different parts of the actual government in this cohort bilingual, you know, cluster that we have in our school. At first, I didn't really like it. It was, I was like, why am I in here? This is not gonna benefit me. And I later realized that I can do this. This isn't hard. I speak Spanish. There's so many opportunities out for me, and not just for me, but for every other bilingual student in the county or in the state or in the country. It is a great course. I would like to consider it for a lot of other schools. It is, I don't think it is a detriment to the students, you know, they're always like, I need this, I don't want to take this class because of my schedule, drop me out, but this is a really good course and I really recommend it.
Goal 2.2, courageously identify and pursue their personal goals.
And goal 3.1, know and practice the duties, responsibilities, and rights of citizenship in a democratic society. So for this particular goal, we've decided to highlight the West Springfield Capstone Project. And we don't have teachers and students from the West Springfield Capstone Project tonight, but I do want to explain a bit about what this program is, and it's been a bellwether in Fairfax County for, for many years. The Capstone Project is a year-long project for all seniors combining a research paper for students' English class with service hours for the students' government class. The Capstone Project gives students the opportunity to focus their research and service on a topic of their choice, allowing students to pursue their own interests. And so to give you an example, we have a student, a student who is now a graduate, her name is Rachel, Rachel Cotton. She decided that she needed to engage our community around providing volunteer opportunities for students. Since service was a major aspect of the work for the Capstone Project, she wanted to ensure that all students had the opportunity to engage in service, so she worked with community organizations, members of government, to ensure that she could create a fair, a fair that was held twice actually during the school year to bring these organizations in to talk about the volunteer opportunities that were available for them. And we see that as a perfect marriage between students setting goals, the student setting a goal of creating a research project built around volunteerism, and then actually putting her feet to the fire and bringing those individuals in to provide opportunities for students. So with 3.1, knowing and practice the duties, responsibilities, and rights of citizenship in a democratic society, it's understanding that it was her responsibility to provide resources and opportunities for students who may not have the resources and opportunities for students who may not have those resources and opportunities.
So 2.3, develop the resiliency and self-confidence required to deal effectively with life's challenges. We are, you're going to get an update on Friday, as well as I'll be meeting with Mrs. McLaughlin and Ms. Evans next week to talk about our upcoming Stress Summit. We'll be working on that for May 17 at Hayfield. We are also had a lot, we have also had a lot of collaborative work with the county around common language to build resiliency. We have a lot of work with the Josh Anderson Foundation with yoga after-school programs, and as well as tonight, we can announce, thanks to Mrs. Hunter and Mrs. Loveglass, that we have now on the website a mobile app with all of the crisis-linked numbers. We also have put on every middle and high school website homepage links to mental health service, and on the elementary sites, we also have an app for parents, but it takes two clicks to get to the numbers. We have a lot of information on the different metrics within the narrative that I'd be happy to talk about when we have time for questions. For Goal 2.5, work effectively within group dynamics and...
Exercise good stewardship of the environment. So I'm very excited because we have one of my principals here, Don Hutzle, with staff members, with actually parents and a student, to talk about their work at Churchill Road Elementary School. Churchill Road Elementary School is one of our Green Flag ECO schools, and it's through our partnership with the National Wildlife Federation, they gained this recognition through the efforts of their student-driven ECO team. They have improved their school grounds with wildlife habitats and edible gardens, they even hold an annual farmer's market run by the fourth-grade students. They have a premier cafeteria waste production program and have been visited by almost 100 other schools in Fairfax County that are now trying to emulate their efforts in recycling, composting, food sharing, and terracycling. They have reduced the energy used in the school throughout energy auditing and education, just to name a few of their efforts. So tonight, we're pleased to have Mikey with us, and Mikey is a student at Churchill Road, and he's going to be sharing with you the impact of working on the Churchill Road ECO team and what that impact has had on him and his ability to work effectively in groups.
As a member of the Churchill Road Elementary ECO Team, I'm given responsibilities. Whether it's getting up early to go to school or to be on top of every assignment, I know that I have to give it my all. Every week, Mr. Hutzle gives us important information and jobs for us to complete. We know that if we wouldn't complete them, it would affect the entire student body. For example, if we didn't fill the watering cans from our rain barrels, then the kids wouldn't have any water to water their plants and complete their projects. Or if we didn't sort upcycling, then we wouldn't be able to send it to Terricycle and get the $4,000 that we've made so far. Ms. Mays is always talking about child labor. We know, we know that's definitely something we do, but we think of it more as an opportunity to be more green. Whether it's as gross as turning the compost bins, no one can slack off. Everyone brings different ideas to the table. We have to communicate, collaborate, critically think through our problems. Every day after ECO Team, I'm inspired. Whether it's going outside or turning off lights, I know that I'm making a difference. Thank you.
Cultural proficiency, 2.6. There are some data points in the narrative, but part of our work with relationships that we've been focusing on in the last year, we have created additional supports for our CLTs, the Collaborative Learning Teams, so that any collaborative learning team wishing additional support has support in this area. The teams can deepen their understanding about our increasingly diverse student body. 2.7, practical life skills, including but not limited to time management, work habits, problem-solving, financial competency, and self-sufficiency. If Mr. Moon hadn't limited the time, I'd be going on about executive functioning all night, Mr. Moon, but I know we have a time limit tonight. I really wanted to have Mrs. Dr. Payne do an executive functioning activity with you because this is what's going on in PE in our first and second grade classes this year. We've integrated it, and she's writing state curriculum that will allow us to integrate executive functioning into our PE classes. This goes along with the computer games at five schools that we have a pilot project with. In our early childhood work, the Mind in the Making modules are expanding across the county, along with our county partners. We had a recent meeting with the Title I, our county early childhood partners, our ESOL library, to look at First Books, which are excellent children's literature that have tip cards for parents to read books to their kids and develop the executive and functioning skills at the same time. And so we'll be doing a big blitz this summer. The county has just purchased these books for all their summer programs. We also found that when we did our Bridge to K last year, that we focused on the Head Start waiting lists of 845 kids, but when we actually registered kids for kindergarten, we found another thousand that had never attended preschool. So we are expanding Bridge to K this summer with some help from our county partners, they just sent some more money yesterday, and we will be serving, instead of 25 schools, 49, and instead of 700 kids, 1,450 kids. And Pat Harrison has asked the county to include this in a yearly budget because we know, no matter what we do with our preschool, we will always have children showing up in Fairfax who have just moved into the area with no preschool, and this is proving very valuable. We also did a pilot, so we know that the executive functioning component had an increase of five points in our pilot schools, so all of those 49 schools will be using the executive functioning curriculum, and they'll be getting training on that. And yesterday, I actually, Mrs. Schultz, met with Union Mill because they are going to use the curriculum with their rising kindergartens. They asked me to come out and see if they could do something there. That's right. So anyway, we do, we are looking for additional opportunities to expand that curriculum, and it's very exciting work. It's also been recognized with other districts across the country who had started to work on this, so Providence just got an I-3 grant in this area, but they have not done the amount of work that we have, and so they are starting to come and look at the work that we're doing. I have to credit Mara Burke, who in Denise Forest, in our early childhood, and also our Mountain View folks who have been doing it at the high school level, because now we've put together a team with Marcy Neal in the counseling office, because we know college and career has a big component of this, and we know that we need a pre-K to 12 common language where this is a vertical pathway for kids to develop these skills. So 2.8, effectively use technology to access, communicate, and apply knowledge and foster creativity. Last year, if you remember Lee High School, we showed you how Google Apps for Education can be used as a tool for students and teachers to work collaboratively. This year, we have an example of how schools have taken the use of that even further. A small group of students at Colvin Run Elementary School and Armstrong Elementary School are using Google Apps to do their global technology awareness projects. The image on the screen shows them in their Google Apps Hangout, and they are, through technology, doing their global awareness, their project. So not only are they doing the fifth grade, it's a performance-based task, but they're also integrating technology into this. We have a lot of information, last year, we were talking about the Speak Up Survey, and you will see in the narrative that there's some data points on that in the narrative that you can ask us about later. So next, we go to Glasgow Middle School, 2.9, make healthy and safe life choices.
And 3.4, exercise good stewardship of the environment. So I get to talk to you about more gardening and more opportunities for students to eat healthy and have healthy options. At Glasgow Middle School, they've been gardening with edible food since 2012. Randy Miller, an award-winning science teacher, has worked outdoors with his students for many years. In 2012, he initiated this garden project so that his students, many of whom live in high-rise apartment buildings around the school, could get a sense of how plants grow, how humans use plants, where food comes from, and how caring for plants can yield amazing results. And so Randy keeps a Blackboard Wiki of students' quotes about their work on their projects, and this is one of the favorite quotes that he sent to us tonight so that we could share. And this is from Lizzie, who was the president of the gardening club, and she said, "In my backyard, I have a very big garden with a smiley face and a little emoji. My parents and I grow vegetables, fruits, and flowers. My favorite plants that we have are the fruits because we can pick them whenever they are ripe and eat them while they are still fresh." So you can see that the impact that this has had on students in the Glasgow neighborhood. And at present, our Get to Green initiative, which is highlighted in the narrative, has inventoried over 40 edible gardens in our schools and sees this as a big growth area for the program as interest in healthy foods, and we know that there's interest in healthy foods, and healthy eating grows. Get to Green is collaborating closely with personnel and food nutrition and PE on this topic to assist schools participating in both the Golden Wellness and ECO Schools programs. And we are also collaborating with the Fairfax County Live Healthy Fairfax Initiative to further these endeavors.
2.10, be inspired to learn throughout life. This is, Marty, if you'll...
I have one job, and I'm not doing a very good job of that.
That's right. So these are screenshots of the resources that we have newly developed on our student learning plan. The first is Road Trip Nation, and we have thousands of videos where students can explore careers. The other is a snapshot of the Gallup Strengths Explorer that has recently been made available through our student learning plan, and the committee that works on that will be working on, we have, we just got access to it, so it will start being used next year in the 14, 15 school year. This is the first year that the required academic and career goals from the state goes into effect, and so our seventh graders, we're, are tasked to identify a career goal. And as of today, 7,000 goals have been created in our student learning plan, and I think it's really interesting that because this goal is targeted at seventh and eighth grade, and then there's a check at ninth and then at 11th, if we're starting it now, 85% of our middle schools have accessed the student learning plan, so that's an 11% increase from last year. And this is, I think, also 8,662 parents have accessed their child's student learning plan in the middle school. So that's also a 300% increase from last year. We will continue to work on the modules in the student learning plan. As we go from seventh to eighth, there is a resume builder, and it goes on into all of the college and career tools as you go into high school. The last slide that we have is really what you get when you put Portrait of the Graduate and the characteristics that are identified into a Wordle, and it really looks, it's really powerful, I think, that we have a foundation for this work, but the Portrait of the Graduate, as it moves on, will magnify and allow us not only to build metrics, but to really see how the work that Mikey is doing and our students from Marshall, how it really is not, these are not words, these are actions that you take, and they're very visible in our students in Fairfax County. Thank you.
Thank you.
How did you turn?
And now, we're going to go to the box and take your questions.
You want to introduce our folks?
Sure, let's do that.
So we are, we are really lucky, we work with the very best team in the world, and I'm just going to have them introduce themselves, if you'll use the mic, so as we go on, so you know who's here.
Alice, do you start?
Alice Riley, Social Studies Coordinator.
Lynette Harris, Student Learning Plan.
Liz Payne, Health Physical Education Coordinator.
Michelle Farrar, Office of Program Evaluation.
Kathy Manley, Esbitts Management.
Derek Kelly, Instructional Technology Integration.
Elaine Tolan, Get to Green, Environmental Education.
Laura Wells, Service Learning Resource Teacher.
Tu Phillips, Project Manager for Cultural Proficiency.
Okay, are you going to be sitting down, or are you going to stand there?
We'll stand here.
We could share a chair, but I don't think...
Oh, you're missing a chair. Okay, all right. Okay, thank you with that.
We're good.
We're fine.
Okay, okay. Mrs. Faust?
Thank you. First of all, I really enjoyed this presentation. It was, this was project-based learning, and it was wonderful to see our students, and of course, I'm very proud of Churchill Road Elementary School and Mikey. And the, it is, it is exciting to see how many really hands-on projects, the gardening, the service learning projects. This is so much more meaningful than graphs and charts, I have to say. And so I really, it was, it was really very meaningful. I do have one question, and also, I want to, I'm pleased at Bridge to K that our partners are going to bring us some more funding because that is, that is such a critical piece. I know we've seen, we've seen the data, and it really does make a difference in executive functioning, so that's, that's a huge plus. The Capstone Project at West Springfield, I know it is something that we've talked about for a long time. Throughout the county, where are we with the concept of a Capstone Project?
Well, I think that there are a variety of schools doing a variety of different things, and so we don't have something standard, and I think that's a wonderful place in our assessment framework as we build that out to make sure that all students have access to the kinds of things that are happening. So that's one area where I know a handful of schools, I know a lot of schools that chose to make the after SOL time a very active project-based time, and so have we collected where all of those are? We haven't, but that's part of our next work.
And do we have a Google Chat room where teachers can share what their, what their Capstone projects are?
I don't think so. Another good idea.
That would be fun, because clearly, some of these projects are very meaningful, and we do have this time, and I know our community and our students, you know, are looking for a better way to make use of that time, so thank you very much.
I have Mrs. McLaughlin, and Mrs. Lannacofex.
Thank you all so much. Thanks especially to the students, Mikey, Brandon, and Carlos, for coming out tonight and sharing your experiences. I also just wanted to say I'm thrilled that we're able to serve more than twice, twice as many students in the Bridge to K program this summer. That's wonderful, and we have to thank our county partners for that, I know. In tough times, they're coming through on that. It sounds like, so I love hearing this way of reporting on a student achievement goal because it tells us the stories, it brings the classroom and the kids into the boardroom, which I think we really need to see. The, the challenge for us going forward, and this is part of our strategic planning, you talked about it some, is, you know, how do we, how do we grow this across the county? How do we make sure that we are still assessing and keeping track, but not keeping too much data, you know, because I think we have a tendency to get too much data? And then also, you know, not piling on to the teachers, because this is great stuff, but one of my frustrations with the state legislature this year, they removed some of the tests, but it sounds like they said, well, you don't have to do this test, but you have to do a project instead. And I'm like, I feel like we're at the point where we have to take two things off the table before we put one thing back on, so I wonder if you could speak to that? And sort of, when we talk about assessing and keeping data, it sounds like we're keeping data on those Bridge to K kids, we're starting to.
We are.
So just some, some thoughts as you're going through this about how to, how to strategically, you know, bring this along.
So on the first point on performance assessments, Shannon King and I had the opportunity to work with a group of superintendents that are looking just at that with the ed leader group. If a district is going away from certain kind of assessments and going to others, and this was just a brain think tank, and Shannon King is from, Dr. Presidio's from Instructional Services, and we got to participate to say, you know, what are other districts doing? How are they thinking about it? We had a good conversation with Albemarle and Chesterfield in Virginia, but also superintendents from across the country. And there, a lot of the work that we're learning is, as we build the performance task, random sampling, such as we do with the PISA, is much more effective than an assessment on every kid at every grade. And so we have a lot of opportunity to shape that, especially with other districts. We have a high number of districts that want to engage in that, and so we have a lot of ability to leverage that work and shape to the state. This is how it could look, because they put it out, but it hasn't been decided. So I know Dr. Presidio has a lot of work that is, how can we embed this? There's a lot of curriculum work going on. How is this, these kind of skills were always there, but let's go back to the performance tasks, not pile on and understand how you can teach through those, and then let's figure out that assessment framework. How can... How can you do some sampling, use our rubrics with fidelity, and do things that will help you? And it's part of what the Portrait of the Graduate will end up with, a balanced assessment framework.
Yes, and I think moving forward also, we have an opportunity to really develop what we call kind of our metrics on return on investment. You know, how can we develop metrics that show how many students participate in a program? What are the actual results from that program? There are a lot of ways that we can measure effectiveness of pre-K programming. There's been studies that have been done, you know, tracking those same students. How well do they do in third grade? Are they on level at third grade? So I think there's some ways that we could, down the road, develop metrics that are meaningful and really demonstrate powerfully, I believe, to our community how that investment's a very important and worthwhile investment.
On the other part with the Bridge to K, oh, and Mrs. Schultz, Union Mill is using it in their CELT first grade program.
You know, and I've appreciated your time, Dr. Dockery. I share a passion like you do for executive function and think that it's one of the anchors that will aid greatly in student achievement, both for students with disabilities and without. So I'm very, very excited about this.
We do, because we work with the researcher, Megan McClellan, and she's giving us her curriculum free, we do have an obligation to her. So last year, we did pre and post, and we're going to do the same kind of random sampling that we did last year. And we're also going to do one more thing this year. We're going to pick a group of targeted schools and say, you know, you learned a set of skills. It takes 20 minutes to do these in your kindergarten routines. What happens if you continue them three times a week for the rest of the year? Because that's where we want to see how it becomes the culture of a classroom, and these are the skills that you use every day. So we're going to have a couple of things going on, but it does have metrics around. And that's why we're requiring the schools that do Bridge Decay to use this component. We actually found in our Bridge Decay last year, when they didn't use the circle games, the kids lost skills. So, does that answer for you?
Okay, I have Mrs. McLaughlin to be followed by Mr. Narcofax.
Regrettably, we never have enough time to be able to probably spend on this alone. I hope maybe we'll be seeing this at future work sessions where we really can delve more deeply into, I think, especially Goal Two, which, as we've talked about tonight, is essential life skills. I wanted to echo again, when you look at what executive functioning is and these skills, it's planning, organizing, strategizing, it's attention to detail and the retention of the details, as well as managing of time. One of the things that I want to applaud, you, Dr. Dockery, and your team, is recognizing that with success in Goal One, you've got to have success in Goal Two. And anything that you and Dr. Garza and the system can continue to build on, I truly believe we will have outstanding graduates from Fairfax County schools. But I did want to highlight for my colleagues and something that I know many have heard me speak to, is we have a responsibility as a school system that in order for our students to be successful in Goals Two and Three, we have to create a healthy learning environment. And as you know, many of us here on the board are concerned that in this school system and many around the country, we do not yet have achieved healthy start times for our students, and we do not have balanced homework loads. And those are things that, because of it, even if our children are trying to master these wonderful goals, especially essential life skills, it's difficult to do when you're sleep deprived and stressed out. So I just wanted to make that emphasis, that I appreciate this great work, and I really look forward to this board working with Dr. Garza to continue leading our system in a direction where we provide a healthy environment and our students are then successful. So thank you for most interesting presentation tonight. I really enjoyed it.
Mr. Narcofax.
Thank you, Mr. Moon, and thank you, Mr. Smith and Dr. Dockery, for your time tonight. I too enjoyed the presentation. Dr. Dockery, because you seemed as though you wanted to tell us, I would like you to give us some examples because we're talking about executive functioning. And the public may not know specifically what that means, but I would like you to share with us some examples of how you are utilizing the executive functioning skill development in the PE classes in those early elementary years.
That's a great one because Dr. Payne can answer that. It's very exciting. The research on this came, Dr. Wexler at Yale is a neuroscientist, and he partnered with a researcher in China and got a huge NIH grant. And his work is around neuroplasticity, and he developed the computer portion. But they knew without the real-life application that students needed to transfer that into a real-life setting. And so for the complete work and activate, you should be doing the computer part as well as the PE part. And so I'm going to let Dr. Payne. Now, we wanted to do these exercises with you, so I'm going to challenge you at one of your retreats to do this. But, Dr. Payne, if you want to talk about those exercises.
Thank you. In the elementary schools that are doing these activities, they are doing with K1 and 2, activities are things like balance, balancing on, you know, certain body parts and changing where their balance needs to be. That's part of it. The other thing is the patterning. One of the things that we did with all of the teachers that we train and what we probably do with you is patterning and just throwing a ball in a circle where you're going every two people around and creating that pattern. Okay, now we're going to reverse it. Now we're going to add another ball. Now we're going to say, go every two to the right, go every three to the left, so that they have to have that memory capacity to remember what to do. They have to be able to recognize the patterns. And it also, we find they have to include a lot of collaboration, communication, and think through what their activity is going to do. It's very interesting to watch teachers struggle with it. So we have, we are pulling teachers together. Sometime after spring break, we're working with them now to see what would be convenient for them to come in for a couple of hours after school or an early closing Monday opportunity to bring the five elementary school physical education teachers together to take a look at all of the activities we planned it out for the full school year to get their feedback on what worked, what didn't, what needs to be more scaffolded and not. And so we're hoping then to get permission to then launch it throughout the school division next year so that they're engaging in these activities. We also shared a video with Dr. Wexler where one school did it with a preschool class where they're like in groups of four or five, and they have balloons between them. And they've got to walk together so the balloons don't drop. Very engaging. So very exciting and very engaged for the students, and they love it.
Thank you so much.
Does that answer?
Yes, it does. It's the beginning, but like you said, I would like more information. And hopefully, we'll have time to do that as well. I did have one other quick question. When you talk about the student learning plans, you started saying like in seventh and eighth grade, we have the resume builder. Could you walk me through a bit how the student learning plans are then continued as they transition from middle school to high school? Do they review it with their counselors? How is it updated?
And I will let Lynette Harris answer that. She does the training and work. And so I think an important part to know is, three years ago, we started with five pilot middle schools, then all came on. And so we're really at the beginning of seeing how it will go up vertically through the high school. Now, some of the tools in Naviance were already there for college planning, but not all of them. So we've added new components, and those are starting with this year's seventh graders. Now, we did have a very interesting meeting. Teddy Praderis has a leadership project in the Mount Vernon Pyramid. And so we started this with sixth graders there. And it is, Teddy Praderis and Debbie Tyler are working on a vertical articulation there that's very exciting. But I'll let Mrs. Harris answer.
Thank you.
So as Dr. Dockery said, at our middle schools, we have a team who are trained to support kids. That team consists of administrators, teachers, counselors. Our school-based technology specialist is there to support the technology piece. So they have worked out a whole plan of who is going to do what to support kids with developing their goals. It could be working in your school improvement plan. If mathematics is part of your school improvement plan, then your math teachers would be helping kids set those goals. The career exploration is done through school counseling. So counselors will go in and co-teach with teachers around those career pieces. The resume builder has been really looked at as part of the English curriculum, although the resume builder is really around adding accomplishments, activities, awards, so that when you get to be a junior or senior, you can build different resumes. So we see that as something that everybody in the school could do to help kids put in those activities.
So as it goes up, one of the things that Lynette does is she works closely with Marcy Neal in the counseling office. And part of this student learning plan, as we've been developing it, is we've also been developing it to make life easier for teachers that are doing recommendation letters. And so it becomes seamless. And we're working with technology so that you don't have to go through the Common App site. You don't have to go, but you can do it all through this site, our Blackboard site. So we're really, as it goes vertically, and you check in on the students' goals, and you know that this is where they are, and now they need to do X task, then it's going to work so that teachers' life is made a little bit easier by only going into one site, being able to upload those from the same student learning plan site.
And a couple of our high schools have really.
And also E portfolios.
Yeah, a couple of our high schools have really taken on the advisory time so that all teachers are supporting smaller groups of kids with their student learning plan.
And the other thing that we are still working on is, as this is rolled out, we have groups of different people at schools that have accounts, and it'll eventually have to scale to everyone, but we're not there yet.
Okay. And how long do you think, I mean, what it will take to get everywhere?
Well, if you look at starting with this year's seventh graders being required, then I think you're looking at as they move up, our expectation with those class.
Okay, so the next five years.
However, the eighth graders that were using it last year, we're making sure that's being supported as they move up, even though it isn't the same requirement.
All right. Thank you all. I really appreciate it.
I have Ms. Evans to be followed by Mr. Schultz.
First of all, thank you for an excellent presentation. And particularly, thank you for the students who came out tonight. You did a great job. So thank you again for your presentations. I do want to say that I think these goals are just so critical to everything that we do. And I am delighted to see the increased focus that we have and the robust work that's being done in these critical areas. So kudos to all of you and for all of your work. I'm looking particularly at what we're going to be working on, on the resiliency piece. So much has been done in stress, depression. You know, we are doing so much more now, and I think that focus is an excellent focus. In terms of the Portrait of the Graduate, I did want to point out this is still a work in progress. And we're still working on that. And my own advocacy is I think these areas are some that I would like to see a little bit more prominently. The health and wellness piece, I think, is so critical that I would like to see them highlighted a bit more in our portrait. Thank you for the data on sleep. I read that with great interest. Once again, it shows just how sleep deprived our teenagers are, which is something that we have known for some time. As one board member, I would welcome seeing a sub-goal on that. I think what we do have a sub-goal on nutrition. We have, on the two pillars of health, we have nutrition and exercise. But, you know, I would welcome a sub-goal on sleep itself, but I do appreciate the data. As far as moving forward, would you like to tell us just a little bit more about where we're headed? If it's not premature to tell us on the stress and resiliency piece? Because I think that's a very prominent topic now.
Well, I think one of the things is that tomorrow in your update, you're going to have a lot more details of the draft of where we are. It'll also give you an opportunity to weigh in on things that you see or don't see. So what we're looking at in a summit is the start of a conversation. And some of those sessions that you see or that you want to suggest will also say, if this is a topic, what happens to it after the summit? So I think it will foreshadow that this is the work that we need to do. We have a panel on the weaken the suburbs. We have a piece on alcohol and drugs. We have stress. We have a homework strand. We have an athletic strand. And those things that you see or that you also want to suggest should be the work that we do going forward.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. And again, thank you for an excellent presentation.
Mrs. Schultz.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you, Dr. Dockery, because you were very instrumental in giving me some information that was utilized in a presentation that I made at Georgetown University last week at an education summit about technology and education and the impacts. And, you know, a lot of what we're talking about in terms of a summit, you know, could potentially include some of the things that we heard, which dovetailed with Tom Friedman's talk to us at the National School Board Associations Conference down in New Orleans that a majority of us just went to, and a follow-on digital citizenship presentation that included information from the International Society for Technology in Education. And the irony is that Ms. McLaughlin and I on the plane on the way back sat right next to the deputy director from the U.S. Department of Education for Technology in Education. So when you look at, you know, one of the concerning factors I have out of our youth survey, which is 88% of youth responded that they have a cellphone or tablet or technology in their rooms overnight, that incorporates, you know, everything from student wellness to, you know, the online preparedness, to blue light, to stress, to depression. It's as if, you know, it's almost like a centrifugal force bringing all this together. So as the summit unveils, you know, I'd like to continue working with you on that because there's a lot of information that, you know, we've picked up in addition to the good work that you and I have done together.
And Ms. Schultz, do note, he's a Mosby Woods elementary parent.
And he's a Mosby Woods elementary parent on top of everything else. I mean, it's just too amazing. In terms of the presentation, you were talking about how you're utilizing Blackboard. And one of the concerns I have, because of course, we're in the middle of it, is our budget discussions. Is the Blackboard app itself integrated into what you're doing with students? Because of course, that's on the chopping block with our budget. And that has a striking concern about whether our own technology will impair any of the work that you're doing if it's on the chopping block or whether there are more effective ways for us to potentially keep in the back of our minds as we're entertaining the budget and the work that you're doing.
So is it a Blackboard mobile app that you're asking about? And it's on the chopping block financially. So when I reference Blackboard, we do have students and teachers go in through that portal. And so if you're looking at having access in different places, it would impact that.
Okay, so it's just something for us, you know, what I don't want to do is have you continue down a path that is good work. And then, you know, we have to keep the dialogue open that the work towards the summit and the work towards, you know, student health and wellness gets impaired, that we trip over our own feet. And so, you know, anything that we would like on that. And then the seventh grade, is it the current seventh grade? Or you're talking about the incoming seventh grade? That it's?
No, the current seventh grade.
That's interesting. And all seventh grade?
Yes, yes.
I have a seventh grader. I think I have to go home and have a chat.
Well, one of the things that we do know is we've talked to the different schools is some decided to do the goal-setting for the next year, and they're doing it after SOLs to help them. So not all of the data has been entered at this point. I think that's where the 85% comes from. Because as we contacted the schools that have not, they said, "Oh, yes, but we have this week planned for X." So I think that we have between now and June 25th to work on this.
And then lastly, you know, some of the tremendous work that you and your team are doing with regard to kind of like expanding the notion or the curriculum component of executive function skills, is that something that you're prepared to talk about at this point? Even just like, you know, briefly? Or is that something that, you know, you just want to hold on to for right now?
I want to hold on mostly because there's a meeting tomorrow afternoon, and there's people from every office that are joining together to look at this, from counseling to preschool. The Mountain View team is. to preschool, the Mountain View team is represented. And what we're wanting to do is eventually have the common language and the common curriculum embedded, but I think it's important work to come.
Okay, that's great, because that gets us to, out of that kind of concept of pockets of excellence, or, you know, kind of a dearth of excellence in some places-
Right, why should the Mountain View, the work they're doing is amazing, and I'd love for you to see that, but it has to be for all kids? And how can you inform us as we go forward? Let's learn from them.
It's a date.
Yep.
I wanted to add to this, because I do think the earlier question that you had asked, Ms. Schultz, was very important. And we do recognize that we need to have a lot of clarity around where students and families can reach out for help. And so we're working right now in partnership with the county to develop a system that's a 24-hour system, 24/7, where students can text or email, and there's full-time county staff. And so I would say, stay tuned, that's right around the corner, and we hope to be able to unveil that and really market it, to your first question, because that is important.
I think it was a wonderful, thank you for reminding me, Dr. Garza, because Marybeth Loughglass, Mary Ann Panarelli, and then on the county side, Pat Harrison, Darrell Washington, the minute that we said, we're not using the medium that kids use, they text. And so Pat Harrison immediately said, we have 24/7 resources, we have to put them together. And, you know, Dr. Garza has been very supportive, Marybeth was at a meeting yesterday, and we're going to have this ready in May.
Thank you, Dr. Garza.
I have Mr. McElvin next.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Very briefly, can we get an update on where the Gallup work is?
So the hope, wellness, and engagement work, we still have our pilot group of 16 schools. We did not expand that any because of workload and the number of requests for surveys in schools. However, as we look at the portrait of the graduate, and we look at our assessment framework, I think it's certainly something that we need to go back to. It's giving us some good information. We know that we still, again, this year, had a couple of middle schools that are nationally recognized in the area of engagement. So it's engagement, hope, and well-being are the three things that it measures. In the student learning plan, the Gallup is doing the Strengths Explorer, and so we're pulling that into the student learning plan. But it isn't the same metric as the other survey. Does that answer the question?
Sure, yeah, that's fine. And is there any effort to incorporate that work into the Stress Summit that we're going to have?
We do have a piece of that, yep.
Okay, perfect. And just one final point, as you know, we're involved with the Internationalization Working Group, and I look forward to next year having, as part of the Goal 3 report, a more robust discussion of how we're going to implement those recommendations as well. So thank you.
One of the things that I've been reminded of this week is that there have been internationally reports of stress among students across the globe, and that Mary Ann got a lot of information on different countries that are reaching out and asking for resources around this. So that's not quite the international theme that you wanted, but I think what it says is, we have commonalities in lots of areas.
And we can ensure that we have a more global approach next year.
Any other board member? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Next, we have a student representative matters, Ms. Ash.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So a couple of things, just a quick announcement. Our final, the final SIC meeting, which is the presentation aspect, is coming up during the week after spring break. I'm not exactly sure which day, but sometime in that. So if you're available, I encourage you to come out. It's a great way to get a summed-up student perspective on a variety of issues. So one of the things I wanted to discuss this year, or this week, was the achievement gap and diversity, really promoting diversity in our county. This comes in the wake of the recent TJ class statistics. So I'm sure you all have seen the 66% Asian, 24% white, and less than 10% of all other minorities combined. So there's obviously no easy way to tackle it, but promoting programs like the Bridge to K and pre-K enrollment, and APIB test fees, these all cost money, obviously. But looking forward to the strategic plan, hopefully we'll keep building that budget up, and when we get those funds, to really put them towards programs that promote high academic achievement among all students, and particularly helping out the ones who start at a disadvantage, not, and with topics such as the APIB testing fees, not trying to, unintentionally putting up barriers that turn off kids who already are unsure or hostile to the idea of advanced achievement, when they have to pay $100 to take the test that will qualify them for college credit. That's just another thing on the list, another reason not to take those courses. So that's my little spiel this week. But as we move forward, especially with the strategic plan, that's definitely one of the issues that we need to commit to as a county, and because if we want to see it at the 8th grade level, it has to start much, much earlier than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to action items. The first one is 4.01, naming of campus Eastern Fairfax Elementary School site. Let me call on Ms. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the school board designate the second campus at the Eastern Fairfax Elementary School site, Bailey's Upper Elementary School for the Arts and Sciences.
I second the motion.
A second by Mrs. Strauss. Ms. Evans, you want to speak on your motion?
I do, thank you. First of all, I want to say thank you to all of the folks who came out tonight to speak on this issue. I see that we had a lot of parents and kids in the audience, they've obviously had to go home because it's a school night, but I appreciate the community members and parents and students in particular for coming out tonight and talking on this issue and expressing themselves. I also want to give a bit of background on how we came to choose this name. As the first piece of information, which my board colleagues know, but for any member of the public that might be watching, this facility is the second campus of Bailey's Elementary School for the Arts and Sciences. This is the first time we have done this, had one school in two locations. It will continue to be Bailey's Elementary School for the Arts and Sciences with two campuses. It will continue to have the same boundaries, it will continue to have the same programs, it will continue to have the same one principal overseeing both facilities. So this is a second campus, highly unusual. As a result, we wanted to be able to differentiate. We were going to have our kindergarteners through 2nd graders at the original site, we will have our 3rd graders through 5th graders at the new site. So primarily, we need to differentiate which Baileys are we talking about, which campus are we talking about? So it was determined that whatever name we come up with, Baileys would still be Baileys. We did have significant community input on this. I'll start with the children. You heard from a couple of speakers tonight who talked about their students being involved, and I think the kids had a great time. I did see a video of some of the conversation and some of the voting. We had more than 1,100 students who participated in providing nominations for what kind of a name they wanted to see for their school. And at the same time, parents and teachers weighed in and gave us their proposals, the PTA narrowed those down to three nominated names as well. We also invited civic associations, the neighboring civic associations, both those that are neighbors of the new facility, which is not within the Baileys boundary, by the way. We invited Buffalo Ridge, Sleepy Hollow Manor, Ravenwood Park, Ravenwood, and Lake Barcroft to participate. Two of those combined and came up with their own proposal, and Lake Barcroft came up with its proposal. So as a result, we had four proposals on the table at the community meeting, which was held on March 19th. We had a series of votes at that meeting. The first one was a weighted vote, which is, someone mentioned tonight that the numbers went down, that's because the first vote was a weighted vote. And then as we proceeded to putting the top nominations side by side, and in the last two votes, Bailey's Upper Elementary School for the Arts and Sciences received the most support. And of course, we've had this on our agenda for a couple of weeks. People have had an opportunity to weigh in, to give us their thoughts on whether this was a good idea or a bad idea, if they had other things that they wanted to say about it. And of course, we did have individuals and speakers say that they preferred one of the names that was brought forward, which was to name it the Bailey's Elementary School for the Arts and Sciences, Thurgood Marshall Campus. I would love to name something, I would love to name a school for Justice Marshall personally, or some other significant facility. I don't believe that this is the facility to name for him, in part because this is, Bailey's is going to stay Bailey's. And I am confident that the community is supportive of the name Bailey's Upper Elementary School for Arts and Sciences. So with that, I'm happy to turn the mic over to anyone who would have any questions or comments, but I do support the name Bailey's Upper Elementary School for the Arts and Sciences.
Thank you for turning the microphone back to the chair. So let me call on Mrs. Strauss.
Yes, I was very pleased to be able to second the motion. Years and years ago, schools were named either by the superintendent or by the school board without any community participation. And it was wonderful to see the parents and the children, and that we actually have, where the schools are named as a result of a democratic process that is open to everyone. And thank you for describing exactly how the process went forward. And I am delighted to support the name that was, in fact, the choice of the community. And I agree, there are many ways for a school or a community to honor other very important citizens who lived nearby. We dedicate libraries, gymnasiums, special plaques and wall celebrations for very important people in the community, and certainly Thurgood Marshall is one. So I am very pleased that the community and the students had a robust discussion, and a vote was taken, and that this is the name that they chose. Thank you.
Mr. Weckl, next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to start by commending Ms. Evans for the work that she's done with her community. She's really been in touch with folks and kept the pulse on everyone, and I learned a lot about the dynamics of the meeting. I have had some conversations in which there was, a suggestion was made that over time in the evening, and I was not there, so I'm relying on secondhand information, but since there were multiple ballots, if you happened to leave the meeting, perhaps your point of view wasn't retained in the process. And so I just thought I'd float a thought for us in terms of thinking of the future, of using something like instant runoff voting, where you can essentially prioritize all of your choices, and then, but you can do it all in one vote. So that's just a, that's just a thought for us to consider in future process.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weckl. I have a Ms. Heinz next.
Thank you. I will support this naming of the school, and I really do appreciate all the work that went into it. It was great to see people here tonight. I guess the process is democratic in a sense, but ultimately, it's a little bit like the Electoral College, right? We get to say yes or no, right? But I do have just a question, because going forward, I don't know, maybe we need to change our policy or not. And so, thank you, Ms. Evans, for describing the process, but I'm not sure, and maybe I just missed it. Do you feel like the community had about the same amount of time to think about and participate in the process as the school folks did? Or is it a situation where, you know, people inside the school were talking about it for some time before the community around the school was alerted to the fact that this conversation was going on, and that there would be a meeting? And I'm not asking that as a way of, you know, denigrating the process, but just to know, you know, how do we do it?
Well, we did post things to our website, so anybody who was watching the, we have a website just for this new facility, and so anybody who was watching that would have seen something posted about this community meeting in, I believe it was late February, Mr. Tyson's telling me, in late February. Mr. Tyson also did personally call and email the civic association presidents several weeks before this. So the civic associations were made aware of it. Keep in touches went out, so community members can receive keep in touches. Now, having said that, if you're inside the building and people are talking about it just by osmosis, or just by being there and having backpack notes, you're going to know this, you know, just by virtue of being a parent. So that, I think, is inherent in anything that we are doing in our schools.
And that's fair, yeah. I think that any effort to notify the community is always not going to have the same effect that we want, you know, I know how that is. But I think it's important for us to make sure that we are, that the community surrounding a school feels included as much as possible. So thank you for following up on that. And, you know, if we have a Thurgood Marshall Name Something Committee, I'll chair that one, because I think it is past time that we do that.
I have a Mr. McElvin next.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. I too want to thank the work of Ms. Evans and all the community members who came out to testify on this. Very important issue, you know, it's a very passionate issue about our community, schools and what they are called. And I've often joked with Ms. Evans that my actual preference would be to name it the Bailey's Gross Evans Campus, after all the effort that Ms. Evans and Supervisor Gross have put into this project. But in all seriousness, just for those of you who don't know, in the community, the Bailey's School was originally a segregated school, like many of our earlier elementary schools in our system. And so I do greatly appreciate the work of the community to promote the name of Thurgood Marshall for this cause. However, and Mr. Spitz, who's still in the audience, brought up this concern in his testimony last week, that by naming it, by continuing on in the Bailey's tradition, we are, in a sense, honoring a circus name over the name of a civil rights icon. But I would say that adding Thurgood Marshall's name to a circus name is, in fact, not the best way to honor it. So I do hope to join with Ms. Evans and everyone else on this board, who will work on finding and working to find a building in our community to name after Mr. Marshall. Thank you.
Any other board member? Mrs. McLaughlin.
Just want to echo my support for Mr. McElvin's remarks.
Any other board member? If not, let me call for the vote. On the motion, the school board designate the second campus at the Eastern Fairfax Elementary School site, Bailey's Upper Elementary School for the Arts and Sciences. All those in favor, raise your hand. The vote is unanimous, the motion passes, and congratulations. Next, item of business, action item, second action item is Infrastructure Finance Committee Report, and Mrs. Strauss, I'm sorry, Mrs. Smith.
Yeah, 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 is all I can say. I move that the school board accept the Infrastructure Financing Committee Report is detailed in the agenda item.
Second by Ms. Evans. Mrs. Smith.
Thank you, Chairman Moon. How was it, last year or so, when Chairman Moon had requested from the Board of Supervisors an additional $25 million in our ability to use capital dollars? Right now, we have a cap each year of $155 million. And in that process, Chairman Bullis set up a committee, three supervisors, three school board members. And we met for a number of months and came up with a report, and the report- And we met for a number of months and came up with a report, and the report's online if the community wants to see it. There were two preliminary recommendations in the report. One was that the school board get a presentation to understand the county's principles of fiscal management. And with that presentation, the board also wants to see information of what would happen to the county's 10 principles of where they want to stay in fiscal management, and the percentage of money they bond, so we can see the effect of $25 million. And the other meeting would be a chance for our facilities staff to share with the whole Board of Supervisors how well we do with facilities, our square feet compared to air, square feet per student compared to other school districts in the region, our low cost to do our buildings. So that's the preliminary work, and that, those meetings will need to be set up. The report had five goals, and there's really a couple of things in it that are different. One of them is that a desire to take any year-end funding that we can take, and start to set aside that money to create a capital sinking fund. So we have money to put into capital, because we all know when the budget gets tough, you want to take care of classrooms and salaries, and our buildings are suffering for that. One of the things that your committee members told the Board of Supervisors on that committee was, right now with our structural imbalance with the budget, we don't really have a lot of extra funds, we're taking it for the next year's budget, but the goal is to get to the point that we would be able to put funding in for this capital sinking fund. The other thing that's in this report is that the Board of Supervisors would commit to starting to put $13 million in a school construction fund for us. And then that funding would not affect whatever transfer we got, this would start with the fiscal year 2016. And by having the, about $13 million in this construction fund, we could take some of the things that we bond out of bonding, some of the roofs and things, that it makes sense to bond because they last 20 years, but by pulling some of those things out of the $155 million we spend, we could get to a little bit more of our renovation projects. Now, we all know that we have great needs. $13 million will help, but we have great needs. One of the other points of discussion would be that the Board of Supervisors would put aside $20 million annually, and then there would be a committee that would decide how that $20 million would be used for facilities needs. Because one of the things that came out in this reporting, it is apparent, both on the county's side and the school system's side, we don't have enough revenue to meet our needs. I think that this is a good beginning for this process, but I know that we still have needs, so I urge your support of this report, because I think it gets us on a good path. But I will have a follow-on motion, because I don't think our work is done, and I think I covered the major points. So I urge your support of this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. And let me go to the second one, Ms. Evans.
I think this was excellent work that was done, and I particularly want to thank our partners on the Board of Supervisors, who worked diligently with us to come up with some solutions. Supervisor Cook, Faust, and McKay, they were very thoughtful, and we did move forward. I also, of course, wanted to thank Mrs. Smith for chairing, being our chair of this committee. She did an excellent job. I do urge support of this. Our work isn't done, but this was good work.
Any other board member? Mr. McElveen.
I too would like to thank the members of this board who served on this committee. But I do think, as this effort has shown, we're only going to make so much progress at the local level. And we're going to have to, if we really want to make progress on infrastructure financing, we need to take it to the state and national levels. So I do hope, over the next year, we can think about legislative positions in terms of how we can push for better state and national funding, because as we know, this is not just a Fairfax problem, this is a nationwide problem.
Thank you. Any other, Mrs. Reed.
Thank you, Chairman Moon. Just very briefly, I wanted to first thank my colleagues, Mrs. Smith, Ms. Evans, who served with me on the committee, and also to staff, to Mr. Plattenberg, in particular, and Ms. Quinn, who were there every step of the way with us. And I really felt that it was a partnership. I mean, it really, even though we presented our perspective, and the supervisors presented theirs, I really hope that this is the beginning of some true partnerships, where we look as one organization, look at the county's challenges, and come up with solutions that can benefit everyone in the county. Thank you.
I have Mrs. McLachlan to be followed by Mr. Nerkofax.
Well, I wish to echo support for what my colleagues have shared so far this evening. I'd also like to offer that I think the greatest challenge that this board has is its relationship with the Board of Supervisors in talking about the budget. And so I would like to offer that, given the model of success that we saw with the Infrastructure Committee, that in fact, whether it's through a forum, a work session, or what have you, when our two boards come together, it's usually 22 elected officials, and it's made it very challenging in one or two hours' time for us to have substantive dialogue where we can really learn from one another. And so it would be my proposal that this board very much consider the merits of a budget subcommittee fashioned like the one we did with the Infrastructure Committee. I hope that will create greater understanding and collaboration as we try to figure out how to work with limited county funding and protect the great services we have in Fairfax County.
I think that might have been one of the forum topics proposed by Mr. Vekov and Mrs. Reed. Mr. Nerkofax, next.
I believe it was one of the forum topics. I agree with Ms. McLachlan, and I think as all of our board members do, after getting through that, I don't want to get off on that, but this was a model of success. Thank you all who have contributed to that on our board as well as theirs. I did have one question of Ms. Smith. I remember specifically when we did talk about this in our Budget Committee, the, your co-chair, Mr. Cook, specifically said, he goes, "Well, the work of this committee is done." So how do we plan to talk and go forward? Are we going to create a new committee on their side, on our side? I just curious about if that dialogue has begun.
I think that's on the follow-up motion, so when we get to that.
That's in the follow-up motion? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Vekov? Okay, you can repeat the point I made. Thank you, Mr. Vekov. Any other board member? If not, let me call for the vote on the motion. The school would accept the Infrastructure Finance Committee Report as detailed in the agenda item. All those in favor, raise your hand. The vote is unanimous, the motion passes. I forgot to thank Mrs. Smith for her hard work done, but your work is not done yet. Mrs. Smith, for the follow-up motion.
Thank you. I move that in recognition of the growing unfunded capital needs of Fairfax County and Fairfax County Public Schools, that the school board requests continued collaboration with the Board of Supervisors through the work of the Infrastructure Financing Committee to seek and develop additional solutions to meet these critical needs.
Second, seconded by Mrs. Strauss, Mrs. Strauss, and Mrs. Smith.
When we had our work session and we talked about this report, it was apparent that we still have a lot of needs to meet. And in consultation with our chairman, we felt that the best way to bring it forward was to reference the work of the infrastructure, and this should be financing committee. So I think what Mr. Moon would do if this, if this motion passes, is that he would do what he did before and send a letter to Chairman Bulova, asking her to consider this. Would that be, if you want to address that?
That is exactly what I plan to do once this motion passes.
Thank you. So I urge your support of this, because we have to be able to take care of our schools for our students, and we have to continue to fight for the resources we need. Thank you.
Mrs. Strauss?
Yes, I, obviously, I supported the first motion, and I doubly support the follow-on motion. The Infrastructure Committee, you all did a great job, and the Board of Supervisors, who were on the committee, also did a good job. Clearly, some ideas came forward that would be very helpful for all of us. But I agree that the work is not done, and that we need to continue to work on this together. And I do think the sharing of common needs throughout the county helps to inform all of us as to what we need to do and how we are going to go forward. So thank you very much, Mrs. Smith, for bringing forward this, the second motion, to make sure that we continue to work collaboratively on this issue. Thank you.
Ms. Heinz.
Yeah, thank you. I will support this follow-on motion. Thank you very much for making it, and for all the work that you all have done so far. It's clear that the first committee did not even answer all the questions that were on the table for that joint committee, although we made, you know, surprising progress, good progress, which I think proves that we are better together than apart. So I like this. My question is, there are things that were not even on the table at that time, that I personally, as a board member, would like to see in those conversations, one being colocation of services, didn't really talk about that, and that's, okay, well, let me mention a couple more, transportation coordination and sustainability. So I guess my question is, as we set up this next, hopefully, set up this next group of people to continue the conversation, will we as a board have an opportunity to talk about what the charge of that committee will be?
I mean, absolutely. We should, you know, we should have a discussion amongst ourselves, 12 of us, including staff, and discuss, you know, what topic should we brought to if there is a joint committee again.
Thank you.
Any other board member? If not, let me call for the vote on the follow-up motion. In recognition of the growing unfunded capital needs of Fairfax County and Fairfax County Public Schools, that the school board requests continued collaboration with the Board of Supervisors through the work of the Infrastructure Finance Committee to seek and develop additional solutions to meet these critical needs. All those in favor, raise your hand. The vote is unanimous, the motion passes. Before we go to the next item of business, which is 4.03 standard school year calendars, snow makeup days, let's take a five-minute break. snow makeup days, let's take a five-minute break.
You coming, Ms. Reeve?
Next item of business is action item, third action item, 4.03, standard school calendar, snow makeup days. And I do have Mrs. McLaughlin for a motion.
Thank you, Chairman Moon. I move that the school board reaffirm the approved 2013-14 standard school year calendar, including the employee contract end dates, as detailed in the agenda item, and identify an additional school day by designated Wednesday, June 25, 2014, as the last day of school for students.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hines. Mrs. McLaughlin, you want to speak on your motion?
I would like to actually defer to Dr. Garza.
Okay, Dr. Garza, then.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. First of all, very unusual year. I think we all recognize we had both early and late storms that inhibited our ability to have school, and we missed 11 days of school. It's very atypical, and hopefully will not happen again any time in the near future. Anyway, our options are quite limited around how do we make up the instructional time. And I'll talk more about kind of a rationale and structure about how we approached this challenge. But first, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank those who've engaged with us around the solutions to this very complex issue, and particularly, I want to thank FC, FT, and FEA, the teacher organizations, for their support. While our students are our first and foremost concern as we make these very challenging decisions, the effect on our staff and their morale certainly is very, very important to us as well. Our current calendar addressed 10 of those days that we missed due to inclement weather. However, we had one additional day that we have to make up. I've had folks ask us, why in the world are we having school after the last day that was posted in the calendar? I think many folks recognize that we do have a board-adopted calendar that shows June 23rd and 24th as our makeup days. We have one additional day that we have to make up that will be outside of our calendar. And I'm going to, and tonight, as people know, we're recommending that we make up that day on the 25th. And so I'll talk more about that, the reason why. There are some laws in the Virginia Code that are quite clear that I think it's important for our community to know about. We are required by law to provide teaching days of 180 days or 990 teaching hours every year. So we're required, our school divisions are required, to provide instruction for a minimum of 180 days or 990 hours each school year. The code also goes on to say that the board may waive the requirement, the Board of Education, the state Board of Education may waive the requirement, that school divisions provide additional teaching days or teaching hours to compensate for school closing resulting in a school emergency. However, if the school board, local school board desires a waiver, it must submit a request to the board. The request shall include evidence of efforts that have been made by the school division to reschedule as many days as possible, and certification by the division superintendent and chairman of the school board that every reasonable effort for making up lost teaching days or teaching hours have been exhausted before requesting a waiver of this requirement. Our local jurisdictions around us have not requested a waiver. In fact, there's been no Virginia school system that has requested a waiver as of today, and I've been told that they will not be requesting waivers. Others around us have made accommodations so that they can justify and signify and certify that they've met that requirement. We have schools around us that have chosen to take days from spring break, to extend the school day, to have school on Memorial Day, or school on Saturdays. We've chosen not to do any of the above, although we've talked about all of those options with numerous stakeholders and realized that there were problems with all of those affecting both our students and our staff, and inconvenes our family, although every solution that we've had available to us will inconvenience our staff and our families and parents. In Fairfax, we have a number of unique factors affecting us that makes it a little bit more difficult to address this situation than even our surrounding jurisdictions, and that has to do with our unique structure for our elementary school days. That complicates this quite a bit. I just want to make sure the community knows, we've explored every, every possible option, every possible option. We cannot meet the requirement on 990 hours, so therefore, we must meet the requirement on 180 days. So, the available options, adding instructional time doesn't work because that would be on the 990 hours. Spring break, I think I know how most people would feel about taking away spring break. Memorial Day, that has not resonated with anyone. Saturdays have also not been particularly popular. So when we asked our stakeholder groups, what option do you feel is best of the options we have available to us, all of them have conveyed that June 25th would be our best option. Now, we will work with our schools to plan some meaningful learning experiences. Granted, it's after testing, it's after officially what students would consider the last day of school. I absolutely believe and am confident that, given, given the opportunity to plan, our principals and their teachers and staffs will come out up with plans for meaningful activities, instructional activities. Some have already talking about international studies, selecting countries, exploring countries, doing those things that they oftentimes do not have time to do within the school year that we've kind of pushed because of all these demands on our system. Science days, college career planning, many exciting poetry jams, or a lot of things that I know that many of our schools are talking about right now. I recognize that going to school on June 25th is an inconvenience for our families, and I regret this, but we must comply with the law, and there's no easy solution. When laws don't seem to make sense, we still must comply with them, and then we do everything in our power to advocate for a change in those laws. I think that sets us up as the best example for the students for whom we're responsible. I want to also assure our public that we are going to find solutions so that we're not having to do this ever again. So we will be bringing forward to our school board some recommendations around our 2014, 2015 calendar for next year. We will do this in May so that we build more days into the traditional year, should we need them, and should we have as many inclement weather days as we've had this year. So our students, our parents, our staff, we ask that you support us in this recommendation and work with us to prepare solutions for the coming years. And then finally, I would just urge the board to support this recommendation. We need to be able to clearly communicate the decision to our parents and to our schools so that they have the adequate time to plan and prepare for that, those three days of school. So thank you very much.
Let me go to Ms. Hines.
Just briefly, I want to thank Dr. Garza for that thoughtful and thorough explanation. I couldn't add anything to it, but also for all your work behind the scenes, working with stakeholders, educators, and folks down at the state level to try to, you know, figure out what, all the different options and find the best one.
Okay, I know that here is a substitute motion, which will be brought by Mrs. McLaughlin again, at this time, rather than entertaining further discussion on the main motion, unless you have a question to ask of Dr. Garza, we'll move on. But Mrs. Strauss, you have a question to ask of Dr. Garza?
Yes, Dr. Garza, I believe, when was your most recent conversation with the state superintendent regarding whether or not we would be granted a waiver?
We've actually had probably half a dozen calls to our state agency. I personally have talked with Dr. Wright on three occasions, one being just today, a call just again to confirm what would be the status of a waiver request, and have any other school systems throughout the state of Virginia have, had they submitted requests? And the answer to that was no. So they've been wonderful partners with us, and they've communicated, and we've certainly communicated to them the challenges, and we wish we had different options on the table, but this is, you know, what the law requires at this point.
Any other board member with a question? If not, let me call on Mrs. McLaughlin with a substitute motion.
Thank you. I move that the school board, number one, reaffirm the approved 2013-14 standard school year calendar, including the employee contract end dates, as detailed in the agenda item. Number two, designate Monday, June 23, 2014, as a full instruction school day for elementary students. Number three, direct the superintendent to work with the Virginia Board of Education on a reduction of the statutory 180-day requirement. Number four, designate Wednesday, June 25, 2014, as an additional school day and the last school day for students, should the efforts in the Virginia State Board of Education fail. And, number five, direct any savings to the 2014 year end balance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. George, you want to speak on your motion, Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes, for my colleagues and for the community who is listening, I absolutely understand and appreciate the hard work that our superintendent and her staff have done in terms of how to address this 11th school day that needs to be made up on June 25th and is outside of the advertised snow days that we had given to our community a year ago. One of the concerns I have is that, as Dr. Garza mentioned, we need to comply with the law. But part of what the law allows for here in Virginia is a waiver. A waiver is defined as choosing not to require something. The Virginia Board of Education has in the past granted a waiver for when school systems have said every reasonable effort to make up lost instruction due to snow days. If those reasonable efforts have been made, they will consider a waiver for any remaining days. Myself and some of my colleagues do believe that every reasonable effort has been made. When you look at the fact that we advertised the 23rd and the 24th, as it has upset some families with their vacation times, it was advertised, and we recognize those days where advertising need to be honored. But June 25th, as many of our families know, is designated as an additional snow day, will only be two hours of instruction. And when I think about what we will actually accomplish in terms of those two hours of instruction, this motion in front of my colleagues allows this board to do the following. We can take those two hours of instruction that were on Wednesday, and we place them into Monday. So the students will continue to have the same number of instructional time that they would have even if we had June 25th on the calendar. But what it enables is for families to resume or begin their vacation on the 25th, and more importantly, it enables the school system to save over $300,000 in transportation costs. As a parent in this school system, I've never quite understood why our children go to school for only two hours on the last day. And when I think about an opportunity here, that as leaders of this school system, as stewards of this school system, what this motion does is it simply directs our superintendent to please bring this additional information to the Virginia Board of Education. They may still determine that they want to vote it down, deny the request, and we will continue to go to school on June 25th. But I do believe we have a responsibility to our community to at least present this request. I don't understand what benefit we have by simply saying no at this time, and so I hope my colleagues will consider the merits of this motion and the opportunity it may present for not only our families, but also for the cost savings that we so need in these vegetarian times.
Mrs. George?
Well, I'd like to, while it was difficult to keep a straight face, I... Well, I'd like to, while it was difficult to keep a straight face, I do appreciate Mr. Greenberg as FCFT's president reminding us of why we're here in the first place. And we are here because of the King's Dominion Law. The King's Dominion Law, which prohibits Fairfax from establishing our calendar and setting our calendar and our opening day when best meets the needs of our division, our students, our stakeholders, our teachers, does not allow us to build into our master calendar the amount of time that's necessary and prudent as we see fit locally to address potential situations like this past winter. And a lot of people live or approximate to Loudoun County, so they'll use Loudoun County as an example and say Loudoun County has X many days, and they haven't had to add any. But they are one of 78 out of 133 school divisions in the Commonwealth of Virginia who have a waiver. I'm pretty sure that there's no classroom in Fairfax County Public Schools where any of our teachers are teaching students that 78 out of 133 is an exception. And so we are put into a position where our thought leaders, our legislators, our Department of Education have placed tourism over education and put us in a very difficult position to have to entertain if we don't go to school for 180 days and were to somehow be defiant, a threat of pulling state funds for the proportional amount of days that we're not in school. Where at 11 days, four will not be made up. That's potentially $12 million that is a threat hanging over our heads if our children don't go to school for 180 days. So the notion comes down to, is this seat time, the number of hours that students are in school, or is this about meaningful instruction time? And the question of reasonableness. One of the things is whether or not this school division has done, and the superintendent and her staff have done, everything reasonable to meet the demands when we're faced with a historic 11 lost days. Well, when you look at what's reasonable, is it reasonable to ask families to cancel spring break, to take the last holiday, which is Memorial Day, off the table, or to send our children to school on Saturdays? Never mind what those costs would be. So what is reasonable? And going through, and I have to specifically and very ardently thank our interim deputy superintendent, Dan Paris, who has spent a tremendous amount of time working on a master calendar and addressing a number of these issues so that we will fix this and be strategic going forward. But as he calculated his approximately 30-year career, we could come up with the fact that this is the third time this has happened. So this is a once-in-a-decade event, and that's, for me, a reason why a waiver exists and the opportunity for us to consider being reasonable. Yesterday, we had the privilege of sitting with the new Secretary of Education for Virginia, Ann Holton, and we brought this up, and there was a discussion about the fact that there is, in fact, an expedited process that's available, and that we could even involve governor-level officials. When we look at what's before us, my principals love this idea, my PTAs love this idea, and we have a mechanism to raise, whether it's additional pressure to VDOE to talk about 180th day versus 179th day. When I've done the calculation of the total number of students that this would benefit and who would receive actual additional instructional time on Wednesday, it's just over 4% of our students. The overwhelming majority, beyond 95% of our students, will not reach 990 hours, no matter what we do. So then it comes down to a question of if we do two hours on Wednesday, the 25th, and go through transporting students to school for two hours, and in my case, my students would actually probably be on the bus as long as, or longer than they would be in school for those two hours. Can we move those two hours to instructional time on Monday and thereby have 95% of the students have the exact same number of instructional hours or already exceed the 990? And then it becomes a question of the magical 180. And if 180 is somehow beneficial, as long as it includes a Wednesday with two hours, but it's not a Monday with two hours, then we have a question about what the value system is of our educational and legislative leaders in Richmond. I do believe that this is an opportunity for the school board to put its shoulder behind the superintendent and her efforts and the deputy superintendent, and for us to not leave on the table our full and vocal support that our students matter and that local and home rule are best decided here, and that somehow a magical school calendar odometer flipping over from 179.9 to 180.0 is somehow more beneficial for our students. So I'm faced with a position that my 16-year-old has accepted a position at Goshen to serve scouts as a leader and as a counselor. One of those is going to be his 13-year-old brother, whose camp is already paid for and starts that week. So I, as a leader myself, are put in a position that do I cancel a vacation that is going to promote tourism, oh, by the way, in the Commonwealth of Virginia, or are my students going to go to school that week? And I know that that is a position that many of the stakeholder parents are faced with, and in that regard, I think that we have no choice but to put our weight and our full shoulder behind the superintendent and tell the Virginia Department of Education that 180th day with two hours does not improve student achievement, and that we can do fine with those two hours on days 178 and 179.
I have two board members on my list, Mrs. Smith to be followed by Ms. Hines.
Thank you, Chairman Moon. I will not support this motion for a number of reasons. The first one being that the superintendent explained to us in the beginning with her explanation that we are not able to solve this problem by the 990 hours, that we need to solve the requirement for 180 days by having 180 days. I guess another reason that I don't want to support this motion is that the superintendent's already explained to us that she's done due diligence with the state. She's spoken to them numerous times and done that work for us, and I don't think it's a good use of her time to go forward to do that. She's reached out to teacher groups, employee groups, to parents to talk about how we can solve this issue. Our requirement is 180 days of school, and I support the work she's done to help lead us there. I think one of the other issues that does not resonate with me is the idea of reasonable efforts. It's not my opinion or your opinion of whether a school day is reasonable or not. It's really the effort we make to educate students. You know, I didn't like it when the school system added time to the day, but it was something that happened. I have my own experiences of being a teacher in New Jersey, and we had a tough year, one year, and we had to add extra days. I had to miss the first couple of days of the class I was signed up to take in the summer. We have many issues to work on in this community. We have tough budgets, we have other hard work to do. This calendar that we're in was voted on in December of 2012, and I know people never think we're going to add those days to the end of the year, but June 23rd and 24th was told to the community in December of 2012 that that was a possibility. I understand summer activities are going to start and things are going to have to happen, but what comes first to me is to meet our legal requirement. The superintendent has done due diligence to try to find a way to get out of this. She has worked with the community, she's worked with our teacher groups. I support the superintendent and staff's recommendation to add June 25 as the last day of school, and I will not support this motion. Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Hines.
Well, this is tough. I mean, if I thought that supporting this would help, would actually change the outcome, then I might, but I don't think that it will, just from what I understand of how this works. And I think right now predictability is an important goal for people. You know, we're about to go on spring break for a week, so if we push this off, it won't just be for a couple of days, it'll be for nine or 10 days. And really, you know, there are no good options, you know, and this is the best of the bad options, according to our educators and our staff leadership. And I feel pretty strongly right now that we just have to sort of bite the bullet and say that it's what we're going to do, and it won't be great, but we'll manage it. It seems pretty clear to me that a waiver will not happen. That's the message we're getting, whether through a formal process or informal conversations, which have already been had. I don't feel like this amendment adds anything, any activity that hasn't already been tried. It doesn't change the conversation, it just prolongs the conversation to the same outcome anyway. So that's why I'm not sure that it's worth the trouble. You know, I sort of feel like we should sort of eyes forward after this, lessons learned, you know, climate instability is the new normal now, and to the extent that we can build in more flexibility in our calendar than we should, and I know that the superintendent is already working on that. So I appreciate the goal, but I don't see that this amendment adds anything meaningful and only sort of extends the uncertainty, so I won't be supporting it.
Before I go to the next board member, who is Mr. Narkofex, let me ask the makeup of the motion a couple of questions, just for clarification purposes. Because, you know, we didn't get this motion, I know that you've been working on this motion all day long, or putting in a lot of time, but rest of us, you know, didn't get the language until just now, basically. But so, in your substitute motion, you have, number two, designate Monday, June 23rd, 2014 as a full instructional day, and then, in number four, you have designate Wednesday, June 25 as additional day and the last day of a school for students should the efforts with the state, Virginia State Board of Education fail. If the efforts fail, which is what the superintendent has been telling us, that it's not going to work based upon her efforts thus far, if June 25 under your motion becomes the last day, does June 23 still become a full day? Would we go back to a half day for elementary school? I'm just wanting to make sure what your intent was, because it doesn't, as it's stated, it's going to, no matter what happens to June 25, even if June 25 becomes the last day, June 23 will become now, full day. Is that, is that what it is?
I think that when we crafted this motion, it was based as a package of, do we get the waiver or not? So, you know, if it turns out that they are not going to grant it, and we go back to it, to me, it's about the superintendent, you know, at that point advising the board and saying, okay, they denied this waiver, so we're not accomplishing what we wanted to do, and the calendar goes back to what it was, which is it was a early release Monday.
But superintendent will not be able to do that without the board's consent?
Yeah, but she's going to need to come back to the board and tell us what happens with this motion.
Okay, and then my next question is exactly that. Since number four of your motion, substitute motion, does not put any sort of like a timeline, I mean, when would be the last day you expect the superintendent to be able to tell us? Is that going to be June 24th, or is that going to be tomorrow?
In speaking with the superintendent during the break, she indicated that the Virginia Board of Education has an April meeting, and that she will work to, if this motion were to pass, she would work to talk with them about having this discussed at their April meeting. Because we are the largest school system in the Commonwealth, so I can't imagine, if they don't have any other waivers, what would be so difficult for them to consider the request of Fairfax County Schools?
I do not know whether they would have considered our request, but my understanding is superintendent's about how the state Board of Education normally work, they will have to make an exception to their normal procedure if they want to consider this at their upcoming meeting, because they normally do put it, just like we do, as a new business to be followed by the action.
Ms. McLaughlin was asking me earlier that should a waiver go forward, when would that be considered? And I was indicating to her at that time, I was told today that their agenda is full for April. But I will work, you know, if this is something that moves forward, then I'll, you know, see if there's any flexibility with that. But they indicated to us it wouldn't come before them till their May meeting.
Which is the 22nd, correct?
Yes, sir. And then, but to your point, to your question, they would have to modify their rules to prove it on the first reading, the first action. Yes.
Okay, those were the questions I had, reading these. So let me, at this time, go to Mr. Narkofex.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. I think my colleagues, Ms. Smith and Ms. Hines, expressed my opinions quite nicely, so I will not elaborate further on that, but the three points that they made together were, we have to comply with the laws of Virginia, that Dr. Garza has done her due diligence as, you know, in this amendment, it says the director superintendent to work with them. She has made the call today, as well as numerous times, so I don't think any further due diligence is required, as she has already done that with VA Superintendent of Public Instruction, and she has also consulted with many of our stakeholders here within the community to say, as Ms. Hines says, it's the best of many bad options. So noting, again, what Ms. Hines says, it doesn't change, it just prolongs, I think I will not be in support of this motion.
I have Mr. Vekup to be followed by Mrs. Strauss and Ms. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I won't be supporting the substitute motion. I don't believe that either we or the leadership team can afford the luxury of devoting time to this issue. I think what motivates me here is really how I view my role as a member of the board, as a governor of the system. And I recognize that we have 12 different views, and they're not identical, and so the things that I'm going to say about how I view things, I'm not intending that in any way to criticize anybody else's views or try to change anyone's minds. An adage about business that I really have always liked is hire good people, point them in the right direction, and get out of the way. And I think if there's ever been a time when we should get out of the way, I think it's on an issue like this. There are no best answers, there are only least-worst answers, and Dr. Garza did a fine job of laying out all of the possibilities here. I don't think that the past time has been well-spent, and any more future time of our leadership team is going to be well-spent. I'm sure that they've got many other issues that they need to be tackling, and I frankly think that this is probably distracting them from some other things that I would rather have them be working on. And I will note, in terms of our own work and how we're spending our own time, we just canceled a forum, and what that does is it's delayed the consideration of items that are queued up, and one of those items, as Mr. Moon mentioned earlier, is a proposal by Mrs. Reed and me to create a joint board with, a joint committee with the Board of Supervisors to look at a strategic budget. And I would argue that that's the kind of issue that really is of a much higher priority for us. So I hope we'll remember that we've also heard from the superintendent, she's got a list of about two dozen items that all need attention in this school system. I think she's been very diligently examining our school system holistically, and I think we have to understand that even in that list, she can't get to all of those things. So those things are going to have to be prioritized, and I think an implication for us is that we're going to have to exercise some discipline and help her and trust her to do her job. Thank you.
I have Mrs. Strauss next.
Thank you. I appreciate the conversation, and my colleagues trying to come up with the best situation that we can. I will not be supporting- I will not be supporting the substitute motion. I was curious, when Dr. Garza said that she just spoke with the state superintendent just this week. And I know that there just are not good options with this, and I wish that there were. And it really does come down to, if we had the ability to set our own calendars, we would be able to build more in. But I am also pleased to hear that you all, Dr. Garza and staff, are looking at perhaps building in more days, hours in the calendar next year, because if in fact we have more unsettled weather patterns, perhaps we are going to experience more difficult calendaring. So I think planning next year to, hopefully, we will not have this situation again. So it, I think it's also the acknowledgement that we know that there will be some families, some children, who are going to have to go on to whatever their summer plans are. And when we have sort of this train wreck at the end of the year as a result of the weather, it is just is going to happen that way. But we must follow the law. We maybe don't agree with the law, but at this point, we are simply going to have to do as we are told. We do have to exist within the state structure, state code, the state Board of Education is the next level up. And whether we like their decisions or not, we will have to live with them. So, thank you.
Ms. Evans?
Yes, thank you. I have to say this, a tremendous amount of frustration with, with this situation, and also with, with, with where we are in the conversation right now. I will say, I do regret that we have put this on as an action item without having had it on as new business. My preference would have been to follow our normal procedure on that, so there would have been another opportunity for various folks to weigh in on what this proposal is. I realize there's a desire to get this finished. I understand that. But I do think that it's important that we follow that, except in emergencies. So I would have liked to have more of an opportunity to discuss this proposal with, with parents and other people. We're starting to see a few people writing to us. I'm not sure that the parents who are writing to us fully understand the situation. They're asking us to do things that we're being told we can't do legally in some cases. So part of this process needs to be educating parents on what is and isn't possible. I think our quarrel here, of course, is, is with the state. You know, they have set a bar that's really impossibly high for getting a waiver. If they say every reasonable effort, you know, that how can we even meet that expectation? You know, other than New Orleans after Katrina, they might have met that expectation, but short of that, they're basically just telling us, no, no, no. At least as I, you know, hear that, that legal language. So I do think it's unfortunate that it appears that we're going to have to extend the school year to a couple of hours on June 25th. I think that I'm delighted that Dr. Garza and staff are working on avoiding this in the future. This is the second time in my time on the board that we have extended the school year because of snow days. And the last time was after Snowmageddon. But, so I'm glad to hear we're not going to be in, in this pickle in the future. Having said that, I, I, I'm concerned about how this would play out. What we're hearing is that there's just no hope that this is going to go anywhere. So I guess where I'm coming around, I'll listen to more conversation, but I think if I thought there was a sliver of hope, that we would be able to get a waiver of the 180-day rule, I would enthusiastically support this. But I'm not hearing any, any reason to believe that the information we've been given to date is going to be overturned. Perhaps we need to discuss in our next legislative session, including, including this in, in our legislative packages to changing that bar, although by that time, we won't have the problem. But at this point, unless I hear more, more evidence that there's any hope at all that this will succeed, I don't see how I can support it and just make this, this bad situation linger on.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. Moon. I do want to thank Ms. Schultz and Ms. McLaughlin for spending a lot of time on crafting something that, that would conceivably work around this issue. And I know we have all expressed our frustration in, in this, and none of us are pleased to be having a school day on June 25th. You know, but after hearing from Dr. Garza, I know there is such a small chance of us being able to change this, and it's very unfortunate. You know, as, as a student, I remember how these days were almost completely wasted. I mean, I did paint some beautiful murals on the walls of schools. But, you know, that's about it. I am, I am very pleased to hear that we've begun work and talking about how we're going to use these days, hopefully with projects, with field trips, with work on developing future plans, be it, you know, CVs or things like that. So I think that's a wonderful task. And I, and please let us know how we can help facilitate that work. One final thing I would add is that this board is going to be meeting, hopefully, pending their agreement with the incoming state superintendent of education, Steve Staples, and the president of the Board of Education, Chris Bronlick. And I do hope this can be part of our conversation and how we move forward and address issues like these that seem to get gridlocked and outdated Virginia code. Finally, I would thank Mr. Greenberg for his testimony, and just say that he has a better head of hair than I do.
Any other board members? I have Mr. Storrock and Mrs. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think it's been said by pretty much everybody here what the issues are, and, and I think the core of it isn't a legal issue, which is what we've spent a great deal of time and closed session about, and a great deal of time tonight talking about it. It is, regrettably, it is a legal issue, but it is truly not a legal issue. It's truly a political issue that needs to be solved. And that has to do with our ability to set our calendar in a way that we believe is most appropriate for student learning. And nobody at this table, and I think I can say that, nobody at this table believes that starting school after Labor Day is appropriate for what we need to do for our students, given the expectations that we have for advanced placement, international valedictorian, our writing tests, you name it, SOLs, et cetera. We have so many issues that come together at this time of year. And anybody, and I challenge any senator in particular who doesn't understand this issue to go into our schools, talk to the teachers, talk to the administrators, and if you can come out of that school believing that we should be restricted to starting school after Labor Day, then you've got a tougher and more narrow mind than I do, because you cannot possibly do that. Anybody who's spent any time, and we all do, talking to teachers and administrators recognizes that we need this extra time. And we don't get it by the way the calendar's set up now. So I know we are committed to that, to changing that, but regrettably, we are in this situation. I, I appreciate the efforts that have gone into this amendment. I was intending to support it, but as we've discussed it this evening, I do believe that we're probably past the point of making a real difference with this. I, my intent was to support this, at least to, if nothing else, to send a message to Richmond and send a message to everybody else that this is not acceptable. But I also see the difficulty in doing that and creating further, I guess, grayness about what we're going to be doing next is not in our interest at this point. I would be happy to, and maybe we should do this as a board, and be happy to discuss it with others, to, to, to make a motion, have a motion that would express our displeasure and our lack of ability to, to set up a calendar that truly meets the needs of our students. And, and in essence, to ensure that, that we don't go through this again. But I, I think at this point in time, we're kind of past the point of being able to fix it with what we are looking to do tonight, regrettably based upon the feedback that we've gotten and the clear expression we've gotten from, from the folks at the state Board of Education. So, so regrettably, I will be voting against the amendment, even though I think it has, this discussion has served us well, and I hope that we can find a way to express this more formally as a board. Thank you.
Mrs. Reed?
Thank you, Chairman Moon. I'll try not to repeat what's been said, but this is one of those very helpful and illuminating discussions, I think, because I walked in tonight with some views in my head, and now I've changed some views, I think, after listening to my colleagues, talking to Dr. Garza, Mr. Paris, and, and really kind of thinking here about, you know, what are the real issues that we're trying to address, and what is the best way to address them with some chance of success? You know, that saying you can win the battle and lose the war, you know? And I think here, as I take a step back and think about it, I mean, I, one of the first, and with Secretary Holton, let's be thought leaders, let's be brave. I was ready to start leading the charge, you know? Let's get rid of some of these ridiculous requirements that don't make sense. And while I still believe that, I'm not sure that this particular issue at this particular time is the way to do that. After listening to the comments, I, I do want to make sure that folks in the public who have written in, the ones who even have, have known what's been going on, that we did take it to heart, and you did cause us to pick up our heads, all of us, and say, hey, wait a minute, let's talk about this. And admittedly, it's been a fast and furious 24 hours for most of us, but, but we did kind of think it through. And as fiscal stewards, I'll tell you, I, I in particular, very concerned about just losing, losing scarce resources in this way. Mr. Plattenberg estimated over $3 million in snow removal. That wasn't anticipated. And then, of course, of this half day, the kids who, who go to school, it'll be, you know, 300,000 or more in fuel costs. So the fiscal steward says, wow, that, you know, that, that's a lot of money. But we do have contingencies, and, you know, luckily, this doesn't happen very often. So I can't say that it's, it should be strictly a budgetary decision. I don't think it's a compelling case, I think, based on what Dr. Garza has told us about, about the law. I don't think that we would meet their criteria. And I think, again, the longest, the long-term view and the relationship building, to me right now, are much more important than taking a flyer on something that has such a very low probability of success. But that being said, I agree with what my colleagues have said, that we really need to figure out how we can address some of these thorny issues, like, you know, being able to manage our own operation. But we have to come up with a strategy to do that. And I appreciate Mr., I don't know what your name is there with your glasses and your hat today, but Steve Greenberg, for, you know, bringing our attention to the issues of, about starting before Labor Day. And, you know, we could go on and on about that, but for today, and I agree also with Mr. Velkoff, that we've spent enough time on this issue that we need to just say, okay, you know, we've talked about it, the public has had an opportunity to listen to us, but even the teachers' groups say, you know what, it's fine, we, we're fine with it. I mean, so if it's not broken, I guess I'm really saying, let's just, you know, let's just leave it alone. Thank you.
Mr. Ash?
So, as a, what I think is going to be the end of this conversation, just quickly, as most have said, we'll probably just bite the bullet on this one. And it's great we're working on the calendar to make sure this doesn't happen again, but at the same time, there's not, there's only so much that we can do. And if, if we really want to make sure that this kind of thing doesn't really happen in the future, it's that Kings Dominion law that's getting in the way. And if you want constituent support, there is no better issue that's going to get everyone behind taking down the Kings Dominion law than pushing into summer vacation. You'll get the kids behind it, you'll get the parents of the kids behind it, and it'll be a really, it'll be a really good platform for actually attacking this issue once again. It's, it'll be fresh in everyone's mind throughout the next year, but after, after that one-year window, it'll start to lose its effect, and it'll be like, oh, yes, Snowmageddon in 2010. So if we, if you're really, if we're really serious about attacking that Kings Dominion law, this, the next 12 months is the time to do it before the next session of the Virginia House of Delegates. Thank you.
I have a couple of board members for a go back. I have Mrs. McLaughlin and Mrs. Schultz.
First thing I want to make sure the public's aware is that 36 hours ago, before a meeting with Secretary Holton, I was in the foyer of Gate House, and suddenly started to hear collectively that there were five of us school board members who had reservations about June 25th, and sending our children to school for two hours, and whether or not they could support the main motion. And so that caused me to, you know, think about, well, why don't we look for a solution that maybe our colleagues will feel comfortable supporting, number one. Number two, reflects the concerns of the public. And, you know, Ms. Schultz will be speaking some more, she's worked on this tirelessly for weeks. But it was listening to my colleagues that prompted me to say, you know what, then, why don't we try to bring forward another solution? I didn't want to just vote down no tonight on the main motion. My colleagues talk about following the law. This motion is about following the law. The law allows for a waiver request. The Virginia Board of Education, or the superintendent, Virginia superintendent, has not wanted to grant or entertain a waiver, and has been very clear with the superintendent on that. And I know she's worked really hard to, to convey that. But we have raised the issue of, what do we gain by two hours on June 25th? We lose $300,000 in transportation and extend the school time for our students who could begin their vacations with their families and other commitments, needing to come into school for two hours. And as Ms. Schultz pointed out, some kids will be on the bus longer than they will be in the school building. I cannot see the sanity in that, because the Virginia Board of Education has told our superintendent, we don't like to grant waivers, and we're not going to grant waivers. I think it's actually very reasonable to say, this school system could use $300,000 to hire three more teachers. This school system could have a full school day on Monday, where you actually have a full day of instruction and far more substantive instruction than the two days that are going to happen on Wednesday. So to me, that actually sounds like a win-win for our students and our fiscal challenges in this school system. That the Virginia Board of Education would vote that down and not agree to a waiver, or in the case of this motion, as drafted, would remove the 180-day requirement by one day for us, actually looks like bad decision-making on the part of the Virginia Board of Education. So where some of my colleagues, and I really appreciate Mr. Velkoff saying that there's 12 of us, and we see our roles perhaps differently, and I want to reassure those out there, I don't think it's a matter of getting out of the way. I do think, though, that it is about publicly leading on something that doesn't seem right. And I do still feel very comfortable that regardless if there isn't a sliver of hope, that the community can look to me, and those who supported, along with my colleague Ms. Schultz, who co-partnered with me on this, and say, well, those who stood up for this motion said, we want the Virginia Board of Education to publicly deny this, and have to explain to our community why that was good decision-making. They hold the power to, to grant the waiver. Why they wouldn't want to exercise it, I think, would be shameful on their decision-making. And so it's not about polarizing with the Virginia Board of Education, but we do, as a board, have responsibility, that the law grants our opportunity for a waiver. We've brought forward, I think, the merits of it, and I really had hoped more of my colleagues would see that there was nothing to be lost by simply leading and showing the community that we heard them, and that June 25th for two hours will not sit well with a lot of families in Fairfax County, and I will be one of them.
Before I go to Mrs. Schultz, Dr. Lazzat, did you want to address?
Yes, very quickly, I think it's very important for, for our community to understand why the 25th would be a shortened day, a two-hour day. In the board-adopted calendar, I think it's been tradition for many, many, many years, is for the last day of school, it is a shortened day. So if Wednesday, the 25th, were not that shortened day, it would have been the Friday before. But now the Friday before will be a full day. So it wasn't just because we're having, you know, we need another day, we're just going to do it just because, you know, just so we can say we had another day. It's because we're rolling the last day of school to, to the 25th by this recommendation, and that's why it's a shortened day. So I thought that was important for the public. So I thought that was important for the public to know.
Mrs. Schultz?
In the end, the situation is still the same, is that in order to count for the Virginia Department of Education as the 180th versus 179th day, we're contemplating sending our children to school for the two hours of the new last day. And, you know, I've heard a number of things from my colleagues this evening about the law. And Ms. McLaughlin is exactly correct. There is an exception in the law. And the exception in the law allows for exceptional circumstances. For something that happens once a decade, this is the exception. So if the exception does not apply in exceptional circumstances and we are being given a quote-unquote "clear" message that under no circumstances will a waiver be accepted or approved, then my question is, under what circumstances does an exception apply? We got one in 2010. And I fear that the notion that Fairfax County, as the largest school division in the Commonwealth of Virginia, might get or certainly documents the need for a waiver two out of four calendar years builds the case that we should have the autonomy to establish a master calendar that best suits the needs of our division and our students and obviates the need for the King's Dominion law to apply to us as one of the 133 school divisions in the Commonwealth, where 78 have a waiver for the King's Dominion rule and can establish the start of school when they so choose, which allows a lot more leeway at the end of the school year. I've also heard Ms. Evans say that the quarrel is with the state. That's exactly correct. The quarrel is with the state. However, if we do not pass this amendment, the state will never hear from this board. And we are the elected officials of this, of this school division, of our constituents. And most significantly, we are the financial stewards of the stakeholders and the taxpayers. And so when I look at a situation where we have the opportunity to save $315,000, $360,000 by choosing as a board to do something that is difficult, and I'm going to quote one of my favorite principles, who says, "That which is best for children is often inconvenient for adults." This is inconvenient. However, the law allows for us to make a case and build a case, and it is incumbent upon us, as the elected officials for this school division, to make that case when it is difficult, when it is inconvenient, and when it is an exception, that the exception, in fact, should apply. This is about money. This is about a difficult situation. And what we can do with $315,000 when we're asking the Board of Supervisors for $98 million? I received an email, which I think is very interesting, in which one of my PTAs and parents says, "It seems disingenuous to ask for a tax increase and for more money from the Board of Supervisors to handle our shortfalls when we have the opportunity to vocally speak to the Virginia Department of Education with saving hundreds of thousands of dollars and making a reasonable and prudent request on behalf of this school division." So, you know, this vote will go the way it's going to go. But we cannot send a message to the Virginia Department of Education, the superintendent in Richmond, or our state legislators if we don't bother to make the request where the law allows the exception. This is not about June 23rd and 24th. Those were part of our published calendar. And those were always on the calendar. And those are inconvenient, but those were known quantities. This amendment contemplates only adding an additional day beyond the published calendar of June 25th. I think it's going to be a very revealing and unfortunate decision if this board does not decide to say to the Board of Education that where the exception allows, that we will go forward and we will speak on behalf of our division and our students and teachers and taxpayers, that a couple more hours on day 180 completes student achievement in Fairfax County, when 179 days, and virtually the same does not.
Any other board member? If not, let me just say a couple of words, that I will not be supporting this substitute motion. That if you look at the language of the motion, it directs the superintendent to work with the Virginia Board of Education, which she has already done. Stab has put in, including superintendent, has put in a lot of time and efforts to try to work with the Virginia State Board of Education to see whether there's a possibility for us to have some sort of relief. And time and time again, we have been told, we have been told, it's not going to be granted. They discouraged us from filing any waiver request. You know, motion does not mention anything about waiver request. The work that we will be directing if this motion passes for the superintendent to do has been already done by the superintendent. We need to bring certainty, certainty to the school calendar as soon as possible. I do not want to prolong, prolong this certainty anymore beyond today. So with that, let me call for the vote on the motion. The school board reaffirm the approved 2013, 2013, 2014 standard school year calendar, including the employee contract end dates as detailed in the agenda item. Two, designate Monday, June 23, 2014, as a full instructional school day for elementary students. Three, direct the superintendent to work with the Virginia Board of Education on a reduction of the statutory 180-day requirement. Four, designate Wednesday, June 25, 2014, as an additional school day and the last day of school for students should the efforts with the Virginia State Board of Education fail. And five, direct savings to the FY 2014 year imbalance. All those in favor of this motion, raise your hand. Mr. Schultz and Mrs. McLaughlin, those opposing, raise your hand. Stork, Velkup, Reed, Hines, Moon, Darnakofax, Smith, McElvin, Evans, Strauss, the motion fails. Now we are back to the main motion. Any further discussion? If not, let me call for the vote. The school board, first, reaffirm the approved 2013, 2014 standard school year calendar, including the employee contract end dates as detailed in the agenda item. And two, identify an additional school day by designating Wednesday, June 25, 2014, as the last day of the school for students. All those in favor, raise your hand. Strauss, Evans, McElvin, Smith, Darnakofax, Moon, Hines, Reed, Velkup, Stork, opposing. Schultz and McLaughlin, the motion passes. Next, we have a confirmation of action taken in closed meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where the board will confirm any action regarding issues they will discuss in the closed meeting. These issues may include action taken regarding students who have been recommended for expulsion by the division superintendent. Board members have discussed each individual case and at this time, will make several motions to confirm the recommended action. The first motion comes from Mrs. Strauss.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who engaged in numerous acts of misconduct that substantially disrupted the instructional program and interfered with the education of other students and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Mrs. Reed. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Strauss, Evans, McElvin, Smith, Darnakofax, Moon, Hines, Reed, Velkup, Stork, opposing. Abstention. McLaughlin and Schultz, the motion passes. We have a couple of committee reports. Ms. Hines?
Yes, I served as chair of a three-member hearing committee along with Ms. Evans and Mr. Stork. And I move to expel a student for possession and distribution of an illegal drug at school. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you.
The motion passes unanimously. And next, we have a motion from Mrs. Evans.
I served as chairman of a three-member committee along with Ms. Darnakofax and Ms. Schultz. And I move to long-term suspend a student for possessing and distributing an illegal drug at school. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Darnakofax. All in favor, say aye. Or Adrian? Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. We have a motion from Mrs. Strauss.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that a recommendation to revoke the Virginia teaching license of the teacher identified in closed meeting be forwarded to the superintendent of public instruction.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Stork? Yeah, Mr. Stork, second the motion. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Strauss, Evans, McElvin, Smith, Darnakofax, Moon, Reed, Velkup, Stork, opposing. Hines, McLaughlin, abstention. Schultz, the motion passes. Next motion comes from Mr. Schultz.
I move that a recommendation that the teacher identified in closed meeting be dismissed from employment and that a recommendation to revoke the Virginia teaching license of the same teacher identified in the closed meeting be forwarded to the superintendent of public instruction.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hines. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. The vote is unanimous, the motion passes. Next, we have a consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, RAB rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Most of the items listed under the consent agenda have gone through board committee review and recommendation. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and public in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 5.01, approve the minutes of March 20, 2014, regular school board meeting. 5.02, award the contract for the Ravensworth Elementary School renovation project to VF Pavon Construction Company in the amount of $13,295,000 and authorize the division superintendent or assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 5.03, award the contract for the Mount Vernon High School Turf Field Project to Land Tech Group Incorporated in the amount of $1,298,000 and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 5.04, award the contract for the West Potomac High School Turf Field Project to the Land Tech Group Incorporated in the amount of $1,491,500 and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Is there any objection to approve the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Let me at this time call on Mr. Stork to say a few words in one of the agenda items in the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do appreciate the opportunity to do that. I will be brief. I just wanted to thank a number of people for making this happen. This is an unusual step that we've taken in this. And it's really is a result of this school board taking the initiative, one that I'm deeply appreciative of and one I know the community is deeply appreciative of. There's a great deal of effort on the part of the community to try to build these turf fields locally, fundraising and the like. We spent the last couple of years trying to do that. And frankly, we were stuck. And when this board identified that we wanted to try to do something different, we identified that we wanted to put a turf field task force together. I think Megan McGlothlin, with our representative on that, I think, pointed. Megan did a wonderful job of leading this board and leading the turf field task force to an outcome, I think, is in the best interest of the whole county. So particularly, I want to thank Ms. McGlothlin for that leadership. Coily want to thank the Board of Supervisors for also being part of that task force and agreeing with us to split the difference and frankly, make that come alive. Jerry Highland, in particular, has been very supportive. We've had, we've looked at proffer money and many other ways of doing that. But in the end, we've been able to be successful by frankly, all working together to make that happen. Two specific recognitions, and I'll finish. At West Potomac High School, I want to particularly thank Rick Genario, who has really led the charge and led the effort there as part of the Booster Club. And at Mount Vernon High School, in particular, I wanted to recognize Michael Gio, I'm sorry, Michael Galliot. Michael is also head of the Boosters and has truly made a real difference in frankly, bringing this about. I think we can all be very proud of the effort. And thank you, Dave Campbell, for taking the time and presenting all this to all of us. So it's really been a community effort and it's really making a difference. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Stork. And next, item of business is new business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but an action is scheduled at a future meeting. 6.01, approve the Career and Technical Education Management System 2014-2015 application for career and technical education funds. 6.02, approve the 2014-2015 Annual Special Education Plan, Section 611 Part B Funding Application and Section 619 Part B Preschool Grant Application as detailed in the agenda item. 6.03, adopt a policy, 6401, student use of FCPS network and internet resources as detailed in the agenda item. 6.04, award the contract for the multi-zone rooftop unit replacement at West Potomac High School to the lowest responsible and responsible bidder and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 6.05, award the contract for the installation and repair of playground equipment-related components and playground sidewalk to the lowest responsible and responsible bidder and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 6.06, authorize the division superintendent or assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute the stormwater enhancement project contract change order on behalf of the school board as detailed in the agenda item and as shown on the county approved site plan to Dustin Construction, Inc., for the amount of $2,57,460. Mr. Plattenberg, you are so busy. Okay, now we can go to superintendent matters, Dr. Garza.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I think I speak on behalf of our school board and all of our leadership team. We certainly want to thank Virginia Secretary of Education Ann Holton and Deputy Secretary Jeanne O'Halloran for coming to meet with the school board and myself yesterday. I appreciate very much the time that they took to, out of their busy schedules, to come and sit down and visit with us. I'm very proud that this school board, I know we've talked a little bit tonight about being forward-thinking, about being innovative and not just, you know, marching to the beat that everyone else is, but really stepping out there and being a state and national leader. And I think some of the topics that were discussed with her, as has our legislative program, I think, you know, has made a difference and is certainly, I think, provoking a lot of really powerful and important conversation, such as around early childhood education, the ADF grading system for schools, which we find, we've written papers on and we, you know, find so problematic. State funding and the restoration of state funding for our schools, the funding particularly for fast growth in facilities, which we brought up to her yesterday. I think some of the leadership that this board has demonstrated around assessment reform has made a big difference and evidenced by recent legislation. Not where we want it to be, but headed in the right direction. So we appreciate the conversation with the secretary. And my goodness, she's, she's going to be, I think, provide wonderful leadership for our state. I'm very hopeful. I also want to thank all of those who've signed up to speak this week at the hearings of the Board of Supervisors, who've signed up, waited very patiently to do so and to advocate for our children. I especially want to thank Mr. Velkoff. My goodness, I think- I especially want to thank Mr. Velkopf, my goodness, I think he's been there every night till close of the hearings, and I appreciate that, appreciate you being there representing our schools. And I know all of you have been there as much as you can, have been able to. You know, my heart, I'm so concerned about where we are, and I will tell you that I hope tonight that the countless thousands of employees and parents and community members who value our nationally acclaimed schools are paying close attention. I've had recent conversations with a couple of supervisors that continue to make me very, very concerned about the direction and the decision that they have before, before them. And so I hope that our Board of Supervisors is listening. The future of FCPS and the overall quality of our schools rests with this very important decision that supervisors will be making in the next 10 days. Decisions may even be made while our school system's on spring break. And I know families are traveling and our employees are traveling, and all the while, these important decisions are being made. So I urge the community to weigh in now with your supervisor, because if we're not fully funded at our request, we will have to make more cuts and our valued employees will not receive the step increase that they very, very much deserve. In our advertised fiscal year 15 budget, we've already cut $97 million. So I believe this board and this leadership team, we've done, we've done our part, we've done our share, we recognize these are tough times, but I don't think, we can't cut anymore. Can't cut anymore. So please do not let this decision be made without your voice being heard. Our children and our schools are at stake. Thank you.
Dr. Galza, the pre-markup is Friday of next week, correct? It's, you know, pretty much by that time, supervisors will have made the decision. So it is very crucial, next, it's not even 10 days, we are talking about just a week. Tomorrow being Friday, just a week from tomorrow, they'll have made the decision, basically. The former actually is not until April 29th, markup is April 22nd, but pre-markup is the Friday of the next week. So would I. Next, we have a board matters? No, we have a report. We have one from governance, Mrs. Smith.
Excuse me, the governance committee met on March 31st, and we will be having a part of the April 23rd work session where we will go over the work that we did, looking at a couple of our OEs and a request to add members to the HRAC committee. Thank you.
Okay, we have a board matters. I am going to start with Mrs. Strauss, since Mr. Stork is not looking at me.
Thank you. First, I want to congratulate Chantilly and I believe we had seven teams at the first robotics competition at the Patriot Center. It was really very exciting and astounding to see the robots play basketball, and they did it. It was amazing. And the Chantilly team has gone on to the next level of competition, and I encourage schools, it's a great partnership between engineers in the community and our students and our teachers, and it's very, very exciting. So it was really cool. So I, it would be great to have 20 teams, and I was very proud of Herndon High School, they have a very strong team. And if anybody needs to know, you need to start your teams as freshmen so that you have the strongest possible creative problem solvers. So they were cool. I was at the Thomas Jefferson Mentorship Fair, and again, our students who have been working with the scientists and engineers in the community, working on projects, and many of these are graduate-level projects, it was very impressive to see the projects that the students have come forward with, and of course, there are some students that will take to the stage and actually do a power presentation and present their projects. It's not just what you can devise and experiment with and be creative in the lab, you have to be able to communicate what your project was about. So, and I have seen improvements over the years in students' ability to be able to explain very complicated projects, and then the students take questions from the audience. And the audience is made up of the scientific community of Northern Virginia. So they are challenging questions, the students did an excellent job. Also want to thank Langley High School, we did case day on Monday. I was one of the Supreme Court justices, which is great fun, which means I have to read all the cases and be able to quote from, from case law as to what the opinions are going to be. And the case discussed was Riley versus California. The Supreme Court will be hearing this case in several, in several weeks. The students who were the lawyers, both for and against the cases, they did an excellent job. And students had actually prepared an entire day of discussions and debates and activities around the issue of Fourth Amendment, which protects citizens from unreasonable search, and the case at hand is can cell phones, can the, can the modern smartphone be searched without a warrant? It was a very, very robust discussion, and when the Supreme Court issues their opinion, I will be waiting to see if their opinion matches, matches our opinion. So thank you, Langley High School, and the students and the teachers, they did a wonderful, wonderful job. Thanks.
Ms. Evans?
I was very pleased to, for the first time, participate in the Northern Virginia Regional Commission's Workforce Task Force with a number of local elected officials and local education leaders. The conversation over lunch was about preparing our students for the workplace, and it was a vibrant conversation. I appreciated all the thoughtfulness of the people in that room. I also enjoyed going up to Capitol Hill to meet for a coffee with U.S. Senators Warner and Kane and talk with their education staffers about a variety of issues, such as high school graduation. And tomorrow, I look forward to joining parents at Brenmar Park for a coffee, which has been postponed twice because of, guess what, snow. So I look forward to hopefully, snowless day tomorrow.
Mrs. Schultz?
I had a Springfield District PTA, all, all PTA presidents or their representatives meeting at Sangster Elementary. I want to thank my executive assistant in the school board office, Melissa Fields, who did a wonderful job helping coordinate that. I've had truly just unbelievable feedback from my, my PTAs and those who represented their presidents, and we had such a wonderful discussion. I've heard that they've never had a meeting like that before, they've never had frank discussions like that before, and the clamor is for, for that to happen going forward. And in fact, so much so that we're actually going to, we're working on scheduling another one at the beginning of June before, before school gets out. Maybe we could do it at the end of June, before school gets out. So that was wonderful, and I really thank all of those who participated so meaningfully. And the Georgetown University had a education conference at which I spoke, and I'm going to continue working and collaborating on the issues surrounding student health, student wellness, student feedback through my town halls. I've now had my third student town hall, and we're disaggregating the information and the concerns about student technology use and effective use, and that which contributes to actual, actual academic assistance and that which is kind of a burden or creates health issues. The 88% of you who responded that you have your cell phones and your tablets in your rooms overnight, put them on the kitchen counter, get some good sleep, and, and give your, give your phones and your, and your tablets a break. You could use it, and we hope to address your homework concerns on a going-forward basis with some collaborative work by this board.
Mr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Moon. I was excited to join you and Ms. Evans a week ago tonight at the Heritage Night at Annandale High School. There were some nice cat calls during the performance to all of us, and also there was a mosh pit, which you guys luckily missed having left early. So that was a fun night. And then, last week, I was also very pleased to keynote the Vienna Optimist Award Ceremony. They gave about 75 awards to our Vienna community students, and it's a great organization that does so much for our youth in our county, so we're very thankful to them. Have a great week.
Mrs. Smith?
Thank you, Chairman Moon. I was at Oakton High School on Tuesday to attend the National Poetry Month celebration, and one of their students, Aileen Dolan, she is one of five across the whole country 2013-14 national student poets. And she represents the entire Southeast region, spanning from Virginia to Florida. She was a 2013 National Gold Medal recipient of the National Scholastic Writing Awards and was recently awarded the 2014 American Voices Medal. She also, in September, part of the National Student Poets Program of the National Book Festival, was recognized with these five students across the country by Mrs. Obama. And part of what she has to do as being one of these five poets is to reach out and do community service. So one of her projects is working with the ESOL students at the school. She's also gone to Rachel Carson, that was her middle school, to work with students. I got an email from her teacher saying that if there's ever a special event student presentation, she would love to utilize her post as a national student poet to reach the larger community in any way possible. The librarian gave me a gift for all of you. This is a book of poetry and things like that from the Oakton High School students, and Aileen's poem is Daughter One. She's only a sophomore. I mean, when you guys read this, it's really incredible. It's, it's so nice to get a chance to go into the schools and see this positive work and this commitment. And, and she gave a little speech at this presentation and talked about she had to present to juniors and seniors and how was that going to go. So she's gaining more leadership skills, and the students were really engaged with her. So enjoy your gift from Oakton High School. Thank you.
Ms. Darrenak Kofacs?
Thank you, Mr. Moon. I want to thank everyone at Springfield Estates who invited me out there for Career Day. I spoke to three different classes of fifth graders, and they were lively, had lots of questions, and they wanted me to bring back to all of you that they want better food and less homework. That was their message. And so I told them we are working on all of those things, and I thank them for their participation, and I continue to get emails from them. So it's been, that was wonderful. I also attended with several of my colleagues who attended the United Prevention Coalition's Forum. And at that forum, they had a panel, and they talked about the effects of marijuana on teens' developing brains. And if any of you want to share, want information from this, I'll be happy to share it with you. But they had an emergency room physician there, people from the police department, someone from Kim Dockery's office, and, and a parent. And it was quite illuminating, because I think the marijuana that was prevalent in the 1970s has changed significantly, and because of that, there are much more detrimental effects on developing children's brains. And so it was, it was eye-opening, and I'll be happy to share the information with any of you who, who would like that. I also was able to visit Bush Hill Elementary School, and once a month on Fridays, they have a full school meeting, and this one, they invited me too. The theme was inclusion and a celebration of the differences in all of us. And it was a wonderful meeting that started off in a gym where children who shared with their language differences were speaking, dancing from different countries. And then finally, Bush Hill used to be a center for children with special physical challenges, and some of those children are now in high school. And these high school children came back to Bush Hill and talked to the sixth-grade class about what it was like to be a high schooler with a disability. And I think what the high schoolers found, that it's not so different whether you have a disability or not, and these children were excellent role models for what we can do as a school system for inclusion and celebrating the differences amongst our children. So I was so happy to be part of that. And I do want to mention that I was at the ribbon cutting of the new turf field at Edison. So Mr. Plattenberg and Mr. Sneed and all of those on his team, they do get credit for not allowing the snow days, and he's not even here. They do get the credit for not allowing the snow days to deter their, their progress. We opened the turf field on time for the spring sports season. We had lots of people there. This was a good partnership between the community, between the Board of Supervisors. I thank Mr. McKay for working with us, and also so many of, this was a long process. It was not really part of the turf task force, but it was a proffer-driven, booster-driven organization, and what was very, it was just very heartwarming to see so many people come out for, to see their efforts over, you know, as I, as I said, after, you know, it was one mulch sale, one plant sale at a time to get the monies, and it was a long time coming, and it was very nice to see. There was a much beloved principal for which the field was named, and he is, you know, up in years now, but he was there and he drove 10 hours to, to be part of the ribbon cutting, and his name is Josh Fennell, and it's Fennell Field, and Fennell Field is now a turf field, thanks to so many.
Mrs. McLachlan?
Two things. First of all, as has been mentioned, I believe it was 10 of us who attended the National School Board Association Conference over a four-day period, and without question, being able to attend some of these sessions and learn about things like high poverty, high-performing schools, and also learning about student stress and 21st century education from a young man who graduated high school early and wrote a book about how we need to make sure that schools fit to students, not students fitting into schools. So it was, it was meaningful, and I appreciated that opportunity to go and listen and learn. What I wanted to share with my colleagues is that on April 2nd, I went over to Walt Whitman High School in Bethesda, Maryland, which is in Montgomery County, and they have been piloting a program called mindfulness. And it is a six-week program in which, once a week, for about 40 minutes, the AP English teachers allow mindfulness instructors to come in and teach this practice, which is a way of managing stress and improving self-reliance, determination, and achieving one's goals. Ohio Congressman Tim Ryan has written a book called A Mindful Nation and explores the scientific benefit of mindfulness. He has offered to come speak to the Fairfax County Community and/or Woodson Pyramid Community to speak about his book and speak about something that is truly coming not only at the national level within the colleges, but now starting to develop within the high schools about this type of training. And so I'm very excited that he has expressed interest in wanting to come to our communities and really talk about something that has a scientific basis but is known for being very effective for helping, particularly in a place like Fairfax County where stress is just part of daily life. So he, we will be working with FCPS officials. I know Dr. Dockery is aware of this, and, you know, they keep looking at different dates where that might happen, and also with Woodson officials. So I'll keep you updated on it. But this pilot program, when I spoke to the AP English teacher at, at Walt Whitman, he was absolutely in strong belief that this has had a very positive impact on his students, and he was very willing to have this loss of instruction time, you know, once a week for six weeks, so that we could teach what he thinks is a lifelong skill. And I also then met with the assistant principal at Walt Whitman, who is also a very strong proponent of this mindfulness training. And just so my colleagues understand, basically, the teachers and the students get this six-week exposure and exposure, and the teachers also have some additional training. But after that happens with the trainers coming in, then it becomes a sustaining program within the school. So it's something that teachers and students become educated and then know how to engage in the practice. And it's not that suddenly they're now going to lose 20 minutes of instruction for the rest of their school years, but it is about helping them to learn this lifelong skill. And then it can be anything from just a few minutes as they start a class, as they talk about it, it's being able to really become centered in your thinking. So students almost can pass through the doorway and leave their stress at the doorway and come in and be more focused thinkers and learners. And so I was very excited by what I saw. I think the fact that Montgomery County has this pilot going on, and it is something that's done at the college level, I would like to see Fairfax County really recognize and see the merits if we could do a similar pilot. And in fact, the Josh Anderson Foundation, Lauren Anderson, who runs it, was there with me for the training, and she said that she'd really like to partner with me about looking at getting some funding for that. It might be five or between $5,000 and $10,000 for the pilot to try it in one of our schools, and that she would also be willing to talk about her foundation providing some funding as well. But I think with that amount of money, it's really more about, let's look and see how we can make this meaningful in our schools. So I wanted to make sure you all were aware of that.
Besides.
Thank you. I think maybe I should audit that mindfulness class, actually. It probably helped me with my stress. I also wanted to thank everyone. Mr. Greenberg is representing everyone right now, I think, who has come for the last three nights to the Board of Supervisors, to the budget hearings. What we see here tonight is not an indication at all of what they saw for the last three days and nights. I mean, a greater showing than I've ever seen, not only in terms of numbers, but also in terms of unity. I think there's a real understanding that what's good for schools is good for families, and what's good for families is good for schools. That we in Fairfax County, we have a great product here, we have great public services, but we have been tragically underfunding all of that for too long, and it is time to turn that around. And so I'm, we are much stronger united, and I see unity out there, which makes me hopeful, although I also am concerned about what actually will happen. But hopefully, the supervisors are hearing the message. Also, I want to thank Will, who's not here. I guess he had homework. But, you know, he sort of, tonight, called out the elephant in the room with our TJ admissions, you know, it just came out this week, and it's something that came up at the Board of Supervisors' public hearings on the budget. When our demographics of our entering class at TJ are so unrepresentative of the demographic mix in our county, we do have a problem that we need to address. We know it's a very sticky wicket. It's not going to be fixed overnight. But if we don't keep it in our sights, if we don't keep the achievement gap in our sights all the time, it's, you know, then it certainly won't happen. I wanted to thank all the folks at Waples Mill who came out, and particularly Sean Duffy, a teacher there, who recruited 200 volunteers from Waples Mill Elementary School, students and parents and teachers for a great project last Saturday. Stamp, S-T-A-M-P, and I'm forgetting what it stands for, but it's a meal packing project that's been going on for a few years. I participated in the morning, I had to wear a hairnet and everything. We packed, it was an incredible operation in the cafeteria at Madison High School. We packed over 60,000 meals in one day, yeah, ready to go. It's just wonderful for needy folks in Haiti. So really, kudos to the people who organized that and to the folks at Waples Mill for showing up in big numbers. Also, just have to put in a plug for Reston's 5100th Celebration over last weekend. I think some of my colleagues were able to come see some of that. It was the 50th anniversary of Reston and the 100th birthday for Reston's founder, Bob Simon. It was a wonderful weekend of celebrations. And happy spring break, everybody. Today is actually Bob Simon's birthday. Thank you for reminding me.
Mrs. Reed.
Thank you, Chairman Moon. I had the honor of viewing our own colleague, Ms. Elizabeth Schultz, at Georgetown Education Summit. She did a fabulous job. She and Pat Murphy from Arlington. And I'm hopeful that we'll be able to do more of that. I just wanted to make sure that I did a shout-out to Elizabeth. I went to the PTA meeting at Freedom Hill this week, small but lively crowd. And also recently attended the APAC meeting, the AAP Advisory Committee, that is, and wanted to thank them for all their hard work, and they're in the process of beginning their final report. And so I was there to kind of listen and weigh in a little bit and make sure that their hard work will be recognized and used by the board and by the superintendent. Upcoming events, I will be helping with the Nottaway Easter egg hunt coming up for ages one through nine on April 19th in Vienna. Registration is at 9:30. Bring your own basket, and students, if you come, you can earn service hours. I am not dressing up like the bunny, by the way, if you were wondering. And last but not least, here at Luther Jackson, we are going to start the process for a new principal search. So the staff and community meeting will be held here in this building on Tuesday, April 22nd, at 7:00 PM in the multipurpose room. So anybody who wants to provide input on the characteristics of the principal-to-be, as well as to learn a little bit more about the process, I urge you to come on April 22nd. And please, all of you, enjoy your spring break. You have all been working so hard, students, STF, even board members. So I hope everybody has a restful vacation. Thank you.
We have a couple of meetings next week. Mr. Markup.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say that I have a new mantra. Home rule, not Dylan rule.
Mr. Stork.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We, I know we have all been working hard on the budget issues as we should, and I want to just, I guess, acknowledge that, that we have far more to go. We have, this final week is going to be very important to us. I want to acknowledge, first off, that I have met with Jerry Highland, and I encourage every single one of you to do the same, if you've not already done that, to have a face-to-face and make sure they understand from you personally what you believe are the stakes for this particular budget cycle. Mr. Highland has agreed, and as he's done publicly, once again, to fully fund Fairfax, and I know he's going to continue to work hard to make that happen. He particularly asked me if I knew what the status was of some of the other Board of Supervisor members, and that's before they've spent a week together. But I think he's curious as to what others are hearing. So please, you know, talk with them, talk with your Board of Supervisor member, find out and see what kind of commitment, what kind of, what they will agree to do, and share that. We can share that among ourselves and see if we can make a difference. We, I've also spoken to the West Potomac High School, Mount Vernon High School, Fairfax Fort Hahn Elementary School, the Woodlawn Elementary School, the Mount Vernon Lee Chamber of Commerce Legislative Committee, Lorton, the Lorton Federation of Civic Associations, and also have regularly met with the Fully Fund Fairfax Group to, again, do the same. So the bottom line for all of us is it's email, phone calls, visits, and that will make a difference for our community, we believe, and most importantly, we think, for all of our students. We, this is a different year, and we have a different expectation on the part of this board, I know, as to what we need to achieve. And I'm confident, and I believe the community feels the same way. But frankly, members of the community, if you've not specifically emailed or called or visited your Board of Supervisor member, as well as talked to your state delegate and state senator about what our funding needs are for Fairfax schools, then you're remiss in making sure that change does occur. It will not happen without you. In my conversation with Jerry Highland, he made an interesting point, I think we all need to hear this. As most of you know, the Lorton landfill is under great debate right now as to whether it will be permitted to stay open longer than what was agreed to with the community a number of years ago. Mr. Highland's been in the middle of that. I know the planning committee is on, the commission's in the middle of that. But the comment he made to me is that Board of Supervisor members were calling him about the number of emails that they were getting about the landfill, hundreds of them, in essence, expressing frustration that they're getting so many emails about the landfill vote and wondering what can be done to try to address that, and not heard a sound about the schools. So at this point in time, landfill won, schools not quite won, let's put it that way. So we have a challenge to try to make sure that the community actively lets the Board of Supervisors, our delegates and senators, know where our school funding fits into their priorities, and I urge every single one of you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, this meeting is adjourned. Who was the debriefer? Pat?